Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to call to order the Redner City Council meeting for February 20th, two thousand and one, and we close session, roll call, and post into the agenda.
Mayor Portman McDonald.
Here.
Councilmember Basua.
Here.
Councilmember Lopez.
Here.
Councilmember Tehran.
Here.
Mayor Saragosa.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you.
I'm here as well.
Okay.
Is... Thank you. Councilmember Madrigal?
Here.
Thank you. We have a quorum. The amended agenda for this meeting was posted in the City Hall Bulletin Board on April 19th, two thousand and twenty-one. Thank you.
Thank you, and we don't have any public comments on this item. Our next item is closed session conference with legal counsel with existing litigation, Government Code five four nine five six point nine. Mr. City Attorney?
Thank you, Mayor. Council will recess to a closed session pursuant to Government Code section five four nine five six point nine D one to confer with its attorneys. The matters being discussed are City of Oxnard versus County of Ventura and Paul Knapp versus City of Oxnard. City Council will also recess to a closed session pursuant to Government Code section five four nine five six point nine D four based on existing facts and circumstances to decide whether to initiate litigation in one potential case.
Thank you, and we're going into closed session. We'll return at five p.m. for an appointment items. Thank you.
Welcome to closed session. Our city attorney, do you have any announcements?
Thank you, Mayor. I have an announcement on one item. The city council by unanimous vote has directed the city attorney to initiate an action. The action, the defendants and other particulars shall, once unsealed, be disclosed to any person upon inquiry, unless to do so would jeopardize the city's ability to effectuate service process on one or more unserved parties, or that to do so would jeopardize its ability to conclude existing settlement negotiations to its advantage. And that is the end of the reports out of closed session.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. Our next item is an appointment item, and this is the Community Development Department. And the subject is the mobile food vendor permitting presentation by Ventura County Environmental Health. And I think veto is, what do we have from the county? Charles? Okay. Okay, so representing from the county is Charles.
Charles Ginkel.
Mayor, this is Roger Brooks, Code Compliance Manager. I'll be introducing.
Okay.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, Council and staff. As requested, we're happy to have today, have here today a presentation on mobile food vendor permitting by the Ventura County Environmental Health Department. Here today from Environmental Health are manager Graciela Garcia and Division Director Charles Ginkel. Graciela will be doing the presentation, so I'll turn it over to Graciela.
Welcome, Graciela.
Thank you, everybody. So good evening, everybody. And so I'll go ahead and present. And of course, I have Charles Ginkel who can fill in if I'm missing anything or at the end, of course, to answer any questions. Okay, so I will share my screen, put that up. And can you guys see the screen?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Very good. That's always a challenge sometimes with Zoom, but I'm glad you can see it. So thank you, Roger, for the introduction. And as Roger mentioned, Charles Ginkel, who's the director and myself, we're here today per the request of City of Oxnard. And also, it's a follow-up to our meeting back in February 16th where we attended your city council meeting briefly to go over some of the requirements. So the purpose of our presentation today and our visit is to provide more information on the requirements and the permit process for mobile food facilities, specifically for the requirements for mobile corn vending. So I'll start with providing some background information on the mobile food facility program here in Ventura County. Then I'll go into some of the general requirements for mobile food facilities. And finally, I will transition into the specific requirements for those, the mobile corn vending. And of course, afterwards, we can answer any questions. So we'll start out with what is a mobile food facility? And well, a mobile food facility is a vehicle or conveyance from where food is provided to the public, whether there's a cost or not for the food. So if it's offered to the public, it's considered retail sales and therefore a health permit is required from our division. Currently, as of today, I checked our database, we have 472 permitted mobile food facilities in the county of Ventura. And these can be as simple as those that are selling bags of oranges on the side of the road to a full-on mobile kitchen and many things in between. So I'm going to go into more specifics in terms of how we have the different permits or type of permits here in Ventura County for mobile food facilities. We have four categories. And the categories are different in terms of requirements and limitations. And those requirements and limitations are established by the California Health and Safety Code. So for example, a mobile food facility type one has very few requirements, but it has a lot of limitations. And we're going to go over that a little bit more in the next slide. On the other hand, the mobile food facility type four has a lot of requirements, but it's not as limited as a type one. Pictures are always good. It kind of really lets you see what we're talking about. So I'm going to go over the different types of permits with some photos connected to the description of the, of the type of permit. So again, we start with the mobile food facility type one, which is limited to the whole uncut produce or prepackaged non-potentially hazardous foods. And those foods are those foods that don't need to be refrigerated for safety. So some examples of these are the pickup truck you see on the side of the road that's selling bags of oranges or the boxes of strawberries. Or the grocery store that goes to the residential areas that has the canned foods, the tortillas, the produce, and of course candy for the kids. And then we also have the bakery vans that sell the packaged breads. So those are examples of mobile food facility type ones. They're very simple, no equipments required because nothing is refrigerated. We don't require plants of metal for that because there are very little structural requirements. No open food is allowed, so no sinks are required. Of course, no food preparation, not even sampling. So they wanted a slice of the orange to try it out, that's not allowed, so no open food whatsoever. So again, that's the MFF type one permit. We go on to the other MFF or the mobile food facility type two permit. That is limited to prepackaged foods, but now you can also have potentially hazardous foods such as milk, cheese, and even prepared packaged food items. And some examples of these are the ice cream trucks that you see, you know, driving through the different residential areas, the Paleta push carts, and even the, the hot food trucks that go to the fields to feed the farm workers. So for these types of permits, we do require plants of metal because we need to make sure that the equipment that's there to keep the temperatures or the food at the right temperature is provided. No open food is allowed, so still no, no sinks are required for a type two. Now we go into the mobile food facility type three permit. Now, open food is allowed, some food preparation is allowed, but it's only of what's considered to be low-risk food preparation. In code, it's referred to as limited food preparation. And those types of food preparation or that type of food preparation is allowed from an unenclosed vehicle, which from here on we'll refer to as a cart. So those types of food operations will be allowed from a mobile food facility type three. And some examples of those are boiled hot dog carts, tamale carts that have the warm-up pre-made tamales, so they can't make it from the cart, but they can warm up pre-made tamales. The making of coffee-based drinks, warming up of churros or pretzels, so again, not making it from scratch, but warming of the pre-made churros or pretzels. Roasting of almonds and actually roasting of corn is also allowed under a mobile food facility type three. A making of kettle corn or popcorn, shaved ice or raspados, and the making of cotton candy. And we're going to go into the, this category a little bit more in the next slide. We're going into the mobile food facility type four category now, and that's basically a mobile kitchen. And they may be small, big, they're, they're different shapes in terms of trailers, trucks, but they all are fully enclosed because full food preparation is allowed from these types of vehicles. And they're equipped with everything that's necessary with all the sinks, refrigeration and all the equipment that's necessary to handle the food safely. Again, I wanted to spend more time with the mobile food facility type threes because in general, the California Health and Safety Code requires that all food preparation happen from a fully enclosed food facility. And this is the reason why you don't see an open kitchen in a restaurant, they're fully enclosed. So it's required that all food preparation happen from a fully enclosed facility with the exception of limited food preparation, which can happen within a compartment. And it can happen within a compartment on a cart. So this is a reason why certain things are allowed to happen from a cart, from an unenclosed vehicle. So we have some examples here, you know, we have the, the coffee cart, we have the Italian ice, hot dog cart and the pretzel cart. And if you notice, there's different compartments and that's where the food preparation is supposed to happen. So we go to the hard question is what is limited food preparation? And I'm going to go over the next two slides, which is the definition straight from the California Health and Safety Code. And so the code says that limited food preparation is the heating, frying, baking, roasting, popping, shaving ice, blending, steaming or boiling hot dogs, and assembly of non-prepackaged popping, shaving ice, blending, steaming, or boiling hot dogs, and assembly of non-prepackaged food, dispensing and portioning of non-potentially hazardous food, holding, portioning, and dispensing of packaged foods, slicing and chopping food on a heated cooking surface during the cooking process, cooking and seasoning to order, juicing or preparing beverages that are for immediate service that do not contain frozen milk products. The same section of the definition tells you what is not limited food preparation, which is not slicing and chop, chopping on a cooking surface, thawing of foods, cooling cooked foods, grinding raw food, reheating for hot holding except for steamed or boiled hot dogs, and tamales in the original inedible wrapper. So, right here, it's a problem when we go back, when we go further ahead in terms of the, the, the corn vending. So, hot holding is not allowed, except for the steamed or boiled hot dogs and tamales. Hot holding of non-prepackaged potentially hazardous food, except for roasting corn on the cob, so roasting of corn on the cob is allowed under limited food prep, but not boiling of the corn. Steamed or boiled hot dogs and tamales in the original edible wrapper, so those things are allowed. Washing of foods, cooking potentially hazardous foods for later use, all of that is what is not limited food prep, and then handling manufacturing, freezing, processing, or packaging milk or milk products. So, the definition-
Graciela?
Go ahead.
For the group, really quickly, they may wanna know what you mean by potentially hazardous foods, if you can provide a definition.
Sure, I'll go ahead and do that.
Thank you for asking that, thank you.
And yeah, a couple of slides ago, I mentioned that potentially hazardous foods are those foods that don't require refrigeration for safety. So, potentially hazardous foods are those that if you leave at room temperature, they're gonna grow bacteria rapidly. So, things like prepared foods, meats, all of those items that will, basically, organisms can grow rapidly. They're usually high in water content and high in protein. So, again, things, think about those things that need to be in a refrigerator, or else are gonna go bad. Those would be considered to be potentially hazardous food. Thank you, Charles. Yeah, sometimes, you know, we assume everybody, you know, understands our lingo, right? So, thank you. So, okay, that's the definition of limited food preparation, and it's pretty involved, and it may be a little bit overwhelming, but I wanted to provide it out there, so you can see what we're looking at when a proposal comes to us for food operations from a cart. We have to see if it's within this definition of limited food preparation, and that, that's very important, you know, to make sure that it does.
And Graciela, can I ask one other thing as well?
Of course.
Is that a state definition, or is that a county definition?
That's straight from the California Health and Safety Code, so it's a state. Yeah, thank you. So, yes, now in, in what we have just talked about, especially when we are looking into limited food preparation, now linking that to corn vending. So, I talked about only limited food preparation is allowed from a cart. And the cooking of corn, the boiled corn, as we, as I mentioned when I went through the definition, goes beyond what's allowed under limited food preparation. And therefore, it needs to be done from an enclosed mobile food facility. We cannot allow it from a cart, and that's straight from that state definition of limited food preparation, which is the only type of food preparation that's allowed from an unenclosed facility. Other considerations to kinda think about with the corn vending is that typically, and I've, I've seen it in the 20 years I've been in the, with the county, it's always the galvanized cans that are being used for the unpermitted corn vending, which releases toxic zinc. Not only that affects the food, and it could result in, in food poisoning, but even for the, the ones that, the, the people that are cooking the corn, it releases fumes that is, is very harmful to be breathing. Let's look also in terms of hand, hand washing and utensil washing requirements. Whenever there's open food, we're gonna be looking into those requirements. We're gonna be looking at the approved source as well, and approved equipment. And again, when we're dealing with potentially hazardous foods, we wanna make sure that there's equipment to maintain that food either hot or cold, in order to keep it outside of the danger zone. And yes, feel free to ask any questions as I go through it.
I have a question.
Of course.
Please, Ms. Garcia.
Yes.
Or, it was mentioned earlier about dairy and non-milk products, is with the cooked corn, is butter allowed, is cheese allowed to be put on the cooked corn or butter?
If, if we're talking about from a cart, no, if it's a frozen dairy. So, that wouldn't be frozen dairy, it wouldn't be allowed because of, of the cooking of the corn, but if we're just looking at the cheese, that wouldn't apply to that part, because when we're talking about frozen dairy, we're talking about yogurt or ice cream, because that's frozen. The cheese is not, but it still wouldn't be allowed from a previous bullet point in, in what's limited food prep. Dispensing and portioning of non-potentially hazardous food is limited food prep. Cheese is considered potentially hazardous if it's the fresh cheese, and therefore, that wouldn't be allowed under that bullet point. Not the frozen dairy products, but this other bullet point. If it's the dry cheese, that's not considered potentially hazardous, so that wouldn't apply to that part of it. So, there's quite a lot of things that we look at. When they present to us a proposal to operate from a cart, we ask to get a very detailed proposal, so we have to see that throughout the whole operation, they never go beyond limited food preparation. Is that a, clear, is that good? Okay, so we'll move on.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, it, like I said, that, that definition of limited food prep is, is just so involved, and we have to always visit it really carefully when we're looking into a proposal of food operation from a cart. So, this is a typical corn vending setup, not just in Oxnard, that, you know, if I go to the San Fernando Valley, that's what they're gonna look like. If I go to Santa Paula, if I go to Simi Valley, if I go, you know, to Sacramento, that's probably when they're gonna be looking like. So, it's nothing specific about Oxnard, just because I'm presenting today, and, you know, to you guys, it says Oxnard on the title, but this is the general setup. And typically, what happens, and we've responded to several complaints regarding this whole operation, what always, what I've always seen is that the corn is boiled in the backyard of a home, it's not in the kitchen, it's never been in the kitchen from the times I've, I've dealt with it, and it's, they're boiled in galvanized cans, big giant containers out in the yard, and then they're transported in the same cans with them placing those cans in the wooden carts. And as you can see, the wooden carts are unfinished wood, which cannot be cleaned and sanitized. And then, most of the time, the carts carry additional items, such as the, the condiments that they're gonna be adding to the, the corn, such as mayonnaise, butter, sometimes margarine, cheese, lemon, hot sauce, and all the, the other, the other condiments. Many times, they also sell other things such as raspados, or the shaved ice, with flavor toppings, which many times are refilled in used milk containers, and those milk containers are not meant to be reused. And again, most of these items are being obtained from a private residence and not from a permitted facility. So, then we go into why does the state, or even Ventura County Environmental Health, regulate retail food facilities, or any type of retail food operation? In our case, and what we're talking about today is mobile food facilities. And basically, I'm, I have two answers. The first one would be very simple, it's the law. So, the California Health and Safety Code gives authority, but not just authority, but responsibility to the Environmental Health Division to regulate all retail food operations in the county. And, you know, with the requirement, when, when we say we have authority to regulate these food facilities, it's for a few reasons. One is, we wanna get them under permit, and the reason we wanna get them under permit is so that we can inspect them, and we can ensure that their, the facility is clean and sanitary, that they're preparing the food in an approved location, and that they're meeting all the requirements that are needed to keep that, that food safe. So, that's, that's the primary reason why we need, need them under permit, not because we need them to have a sticker on their card, or because we, we need more money into the division, is because we have to have a way to be able to inspect them in order to ensure food safe, safe food to the public. Now, I'm gonna go to the second answer, which is to me more significant, and for me personally, is the reason why I came into this field of environmental health, which is, we wanna protect public health. That is the reason, the primary reason why we oversee the food operations whenever food's offered to the public. And, you know, we wanna protect food, public health, we wanna prevent foodborne illness. That is the most important reason of why we do what we do, and why the requirements are in place. And you can say, well, you know, I've eaten corn so many, for so many years, and I've never gotten sick. But we have to look at reality, and the numbers are out there. The CDC, which is the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, estimate that every year in the United States, about 45 million people get sick from something they ate. And then, out of those, about 128,000 get hospitalized, and many of those hospitalized end up with disabilities for life, such as damage, permanent damage to their kidneys, their liver, or, or other disabilities. And approximately 3,000 people die each year because of something they ate. Now, you can think 3,000 people, based on the, the millions in the United States, it's really not a big deal. But when somebody you love is amongst those 3,000 people, that number is just huge, and it's really something that shouldn't be happening. So, that, again, that's our focus, and that really is the reason why we do what we do. Kinda, in, in that line, CDC has also identified the five major risk factors for foodborne illness. So, why does foodborne illness happen? These are the five primary reasons of why it happens. So, I put him out there, which is per personal hygiene is, is one of the top ones, and that primarily has to do with no hand washing, or improper hand washing. The next one is improper holding temperatures, which means keeping those potentially hazardous foods at unsafe temperatures. So, cold foods need to be kept cold, 41 or below, and hot foods need to be kept at 35, 135 or, or above, so they need to be kept hot. If they're left at room temperature, or dur, or in the danger zone, that's when toxins and bacteria can reproduce. Then, we go to contaminated equipment and utensils. Next, inadequate cooking temperatures, that's primarily important for meats, but even vegetables have a required temperature that they need to be cooked to. And then, food from unapproved sources. So, those are the five major risk factors, and again, that's not Ventura County that we came up with this, this, this was identified by the CDC. Kinda looking at those five risk, major risk factors, and now looking into what we're requiring for mobile food facilities that handle open food, and kinda connecting those, why those requirements, what it has to do with those major risk factors. To address the, the risk factor of, of per personal hygiene, hand washing is required whenever open food is being handled. And the hand washing sink is required with warm water, soap, and paper towels in order to adequately wash your hands. The next one, the improper holding temperatures. Refrigeration units, or hot holding units are required in order to keep the, the food safe and prevent rapid growth of organisms in those foods. And I will tell you that I did a couple operations with a couple of the code compliance, the city code compliance years ago for corn vending. And when we started checking, the, the temperature of the corn was, you know, really high at the beginning of the, of our day, and then, a couple hours later, we were finding them, and now we were finding it in the danger zone. If you don't have mechanism that's gonna maintain a certain temperature of the food, then there's the, the risk of the rapid growth of organisms. The next item is the contaminated equipment and utensils, and this is the reason why a wear washing sink is required with hot and cold running water in order to properly wash utensils. Next item, inadequate cooking temperatures. Here, we would need to see adequate cooking equipment that would be required, whether on the mobile unit, or if they're getting the food precooked at a restaurant, we would need to verify that there's a way to properly cook the food. And then, the last one is food from unapproved sources. It is required that all food be obtained from a permitted facility, and preparation of food from home is not allowed. And it is required that all mobile food facilities operate from a permitted commissary. Okay, so now, what, what are the options for, for corn vending, right? We talked about that for boiled corn vending, the cart is not, would just not work, because it would not be allowed per the California Health and Safety Code. We went over the five major risk factors and the different items that would be required in order to safely prepare the corn. So, this is something that, it would not necessarily look exactly like this, but here are some of the components that would be necessary. We would need refrigeration units for the, the food items that need to be refrigerated, such as butter, if they're using butter, mayonnaise, if it has egg product in it, you know, and any other cold potentially hazardous food. Right below it is a picture of a three-compartment sink and a hand washing sink. Obviously, hand wash sink is for washing of hands, and then, the three-compartment sink would be for washing of utensils. And of course, they, you know, they would need potable water and a water heater to heat up the, the water. To the right, you see cooking equipment and a hot holding unit, because once the corn is, is cooked, it needs to be hot held at a safe temperature. Like I mentioned, it is required that mobile food facilities operate from permitted commissaries. So, here's an example of a commissary, and this is where the trucks go out there and fill up their potable water tanks, so we know that they're not filling their tanks with garden hose, with irrigation water, we need to make sure it's coming from a potable water source. And then, they also empty their, their wastewater at this location, so all the wastewater with grease and everything else goes through the proper clarifiers before it connects into the sewer system. They also have to leave their units there whenever they're not operating, and the commissaries are equipped with electrical connections, so that each unit is plugged into electricity during the time they're not operating, so that the refrigerators are at proper temperatures Here are some photos from boiled corn vendors from other counties. We don't have any in Ventura County that only do boiled corn from those fully enclosed mobile food facilities. The ones that do sell corn from those units, they sell something else. If they're gonna invest in a mobile kitchen, most of them decide to sell tacos and, you know, other items as well. But here are some photos from some trucks that sell, just specialize in the boiled corn vending in other counties. Now, if you remember, I did mention that roasting of corn would be allowed from a cart, and, and here is an example of how that cart would look like, which does not look like anything like the ones we saw before the unpermitted corn vending. You cannot push it, it's definitely heavy, because you still need certain components, even if it's from a cart. So, the picture to the left shows a three-compartment sink, because utensil washing still needs to be done. The picture in the middle shows the hand washing sink, the hot holding unit, and the roaster. And then, the picture to the right shows everything closed up, and you can see on the top of it that it has mechanical exhaust, so it has a hood. So, all of that is required, even for, even if it's allowed from a cart for the roasting of corn. So, again, it's something that doesn't get pushed through the sidewalk, it's gonna be something that gets towed, and then set up at a given location, and then operate for a fixed period of time before they move to another location. So, you know, this is kinda the last slide, and, you know, what, what are the next steps? And, and basically, for environmental health, you know, we, we wanna continue to coordinate with the City of Oxnard, we have been able to coordinate for years, and, you know, it's been great working with City of Oxnard Code Compliance, and we've worked together whenever we've addressed complaints of unpermitted mobile vendors, and we, we would like to continue coordinating that. The Division, you know, Environmental Health is, focuses on outreach and education. Um, the division, you know, environmental health is, focuses on outreach and education. So we don't go out there looking for vendors and try to, um, you know, or issue citations or take away their, 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 their equipment for different reasons. One is, we don't have the resources to do that. But second, again, our focus is on outreach and education. So when we see them out there, we're gonna provide information to them on how to get a permit. Our information's also available on the, uh, on our website. It's in English and Spanish. We have a lot of information that details the requirements and the process of how to apply for a permit. Also, we're very open to having individuals giving us a call, and we're very available to speak to anybody who's interested in, in obtaining a permit and wanting to learn more about the requirements. We have staff that is bilingual, including myself. Uh, so if somebody needs that, that help, we've been very available and now willing to provide that, that help to, and guidance and consultation to, um, the, the vendors, so the potential vendors. Um, again, we, we, when I mentioned that the, uh, California Health and Safety Code gives us authority to regulate, uh, the food operations, it's not just authority, but it's responsibility. It is our responsibility to make sure that we do regulate and, um, again, for the purpose of protecting public health. However, we, we respond to these types of, um, issues primarily um, as a result of a complaint. But it may also be that an inspector and during their routine day may also stop and, um, address it if they see it happening. And, you know, we're very open, again, to providing workshops, meetings with individuals from groups in order to provide more information about how to get a permit. And, and as a matter of fact, I've done that in the past many times for the City of Oxnard and for other cities. I'm very, um, much available to do that, or other staff here in our division, in order to, uh, work together, and in order to provide that information to, to the public. And, um, Charles, I just wanna see if you wanna add anything?
Uh, Crossy LA, I think, uh, you covered just about everything, um, I can imagine. Um, sure, there's gonna be questions. Um, I, I just have to say that I wanna echo the, you know, the relationship we've had with, uh, Oxnard, the City of Oxnard and the, um, as particularly the co-compliance group, um, you know, we've, we've coordinated a few, uh, scenarios where we've had to address some illegal, uh, food vending, and, um, just they, they have an exceptional team, and, and we'd like to continue that cooperation. Uh, but with that, I would, I'd love to answer any questions for the group. Um, I'm sure that we have a few.
Yeah, thank you, thank you so much, uh. And again, I wanna thank, uh, Roger Brooks, you know, for working with you, and I think that, uh, the county environmental health has provided some excellent information for, for what the public can look at, and also if vendors wanna work, if they wanna sell, whether it's celotes, whether it's whatever they wanna sell, they, I think it's important that they contact you and get the proper permits, you know, because this is a, a health and safety issue. And I really wanna commend you for an excellent presentation, you know, for what you, uh, what you are doing, Charles, and, and also, uh, Mrs. Garcia. And I think we have some questions. We'll start off with, uh, Councilmember Pirella, followed by Councilmember Tehran.
Thank you very much, Ms. Garcia. Mr. Gankel, I appreciate it. Uh, I'll thank the city management for getting this on an agenda. A couple of, one specific question. When we talk about hot water, do you have a minimum temperature the hot water on these various categories has to be? I'm interested in that, and, uh, and, uh, again, thank you very much for the presentation. That's my question.
Yes, so for, um, handwashing, what's required is warm water at a hundred degrees. So if, um, a hundred degrees to a hundred and eight, it's, if it's a handwashing sink that the water, hot and water cannot be adjusted, it cannot exceed one oh eight. If it has cold water, then you can have as hot water as you want, because you can always temper it with the cold water. For the, uh, the, the wear washing sink, the requirement is a hundred and twenty degrees or higher for hot water. And of course, you need the cold water as well.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Tehran, and followed by Councilmember, Councilwoman Lopez.
Thank you very much, uh, Mayor, and thank you for the presentation, uh, Ms. Garcia, and, uh, Mr. Gankel, and, um, I, I appreciate the presentation. I had looked through it, uh, prior, and to see it presented gives a lot more context. Um, and as I was taking notes and writing down my questions, every single one of them was actually answered by the presentation in the most part. But I do wanna, um, just follow up on a few items. The first is the galvanized cans that are typically used by the, um, street vendors who we see, um, not just in Oxnard or Ventura County, but across the state. Uh, those galvanized cans, when you say that they're toxic, or, I've, excuse me, when they're heated, they release toxic zinc, um, is that, uh, is there a possibility that leaches into the, um, food products as well into the corn, and, uh, as well as being, um, I guess it's aerosolized or vaporized, where it can be inhaled by the people who are preparing the corn? What does that look like exactly?
Yes, so, um, there is, the, the higher risk is the breathing of the fumes, uh, from all the lit- literature that I read. But there is a toxicity of, uh, going into the food and ca- potentially causing, uh, food intoxication or food poisoning. Exactly what the, the, the numbers and all of that, um, are, I, I don't know. Um, but you know, what, what we look at is that, um, no food item or no utensil should ever leach any type of, um, harmful, you know, and materials or anything onto the food. So whenever it does, then it's, it becomes a problem. But from what I read, the, the most significant thing is actually breathing it, which would be more on the, the people preparing the, the corn, um, and at home.
Okay, thank you for that. And, um, my second question of, of three that I had, uh, I think it was also answered by the presentation, but I'll just get uh, confirmation or elaboration on it. My question was, uh, what would an approved cart or conveyance actually look like? And I think you gave some examples. There were, really, we're looking at the larger scale trailer, um, adapted type of conveyances, where you have either an enclosed kitchen or food preparation area, or you have that black trailer that had all of those required components in them, a handwashing sink and something to keep the food at temperature. Is that correct?
Well, and the one that we saw at the end, the, the black trailer, that's for roasted corn only, because that's still considered to be a non-enclosed mobile food facility. So enclosed would mean when the, the employees are inside, working from inside the unit. So what you saw at the end was don't be allowed for boiled corn. So for boiled corn, it would be the fully enclosed, either truck or trailer, that, um, you work from inside, and that's equipped with all the, um, the equipment that we talked about.
Okay, so essentially, as health code currently stands in the state of California, in order for someone to sell boiled corn, their conveyance would need to be those, um, those, uh, in, those ones that were covered or that you had mentioned right now, right? Where a person would be inside preparing the corn and need to sell it that way?
Correct. The way that the code is, and we just stay law, that would be the, um, the only way. Now, there has been a, a, a move, um, it has happened a few times where they've tried to change the stay law, so that limited food preparation is expanded to allow boiled corn, but it has not moved. Every time it's brought up, um, and, and the whole thing is, is that low-risk operations is what should be allowed from a cart. That's the whole idea. And you may wonder why boiled corn and, and versus roasted corn. What's the difference, right? It's corn. But it's the handling. The roasted corn stays in the husk the whole time. It's almost packaged, all the way till it's handed to the customer. And that's why it's looked as a lower risk than the boiling of corn. So yeah, so right now, the way the law is written, yeah, that would be the only way.
All right, thank you. And that leads into my final question, which was, um, exactly that. It sounds to me, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, that at the municipal level, at the county level, that there's, um, little to nothing that can happen at this level that would be able to allow vendors to be able to obtain a permit, like to allow variances or exceptions or anything like that, because of the way state law is written. And so, um, in order for the vendors to operate in, um, the, the scale they currently do, even if they were to meet the, you know, food standards or practices that they do do, there would need to be, it, it sounds like a change in state-level legislation. Is that correct?
Correct, yeah, that's, that would be the, the way to do it. You know, the, the code, the California Health and Safety Code in some areas gives us flexibility, and where it does, we definitely try to apply it. But then there's other areas where it doesn't, and you know, that, that section of limited food preparation is really clear. In the section that talks about that all food preparation must happen from a fully enclosed food facility, with the exception of limited food prep, it, it ties us, you know, where we can only allow operations from a cart for very specific types of operations. And again, we loo- we have to look at it, and once it goes beyond that, we have to say no.
Thank you very much for that. And the last thing I'll say on that is that, um, I have seen calls to, um, uh, for the city or for the county to do whatever they can to help these, uh, folks out who are trying to, um, make, uh, honest money with street vending, um, and it sounds like they, from what I'm hearing here, is that the county and the city have done essentially what we can do at this point, and now, um, I would encourage people, if this is something they're willing to take the torch on, to, um, work with the state at the state level, or look for legis- legislation, and push for our elected officials to move that forward for the benefit of the people we're trying to help here. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. We have a Councilwoman Lopez.
Thank you, Mayor, and I really appreciate, um, Ms. Garcia and Mr. Gankel coming back, um, and, and doing this presentation. I think it's very, very informative, very helpful, so I do hope that our, our residents, um, those in particularly, uh, who have come forward in, in, in the past, uh, with concerns about, um, street vendors, um, are able to, to, uh, learn from this as well, and, and how we're trying to, to find a, a way to support our community, um, who is, i- is part of the, this, uh, uh, this community. So, um, Mr. Tehran actually asked a, a few of the questions that I had, so I appreciate that. Um, so, uh, the, but the one that I did want to follow up, um, and you kind of talked about the difference between, uh, roasted corn and, uh, you know, the traditional corn vendors that, that we see, uh, we see throughout the county. Um, but I'm just wondering, and I'm not sure if I'm making an appropriate comparison, how would you, uh, di- differentiate between, uh, a hot dog vendor and a corn vendor?
In terms of the, kind of the low risk in that?
Yes, and, and just, you know, looking at the preparation, I mean, is a hot dog, uh, uh, mobile cart, uh, something that could be adapted to a corn vendor?
It possibly could, if, again, the, the stay law did change to allow that. So you know, when I talk about no hot holding, period, except for boiled, um, hot dogs and, um, and, and the tamales in the edible wrapper, right? So then it ties us to that. What exactly would be the, the difference in risk from, um, a hot dog to, um, cooked corn? Yeah, you know, more bacteria growing in corn than a hot dog. I mean, they're both considered potentially hazardous food. Um, so you, you make a very good point there, and then that's where the, the legislation, you know, can look into it. There's definitely always been, uh, special interest legislation. Um, and that's how some things get in, in, into law. And if enough people lobby towards that and, and special, um, interest legislation for corn vendors, that can work, but always keep in mind that it's not gonna look the way they look right now. Because where they can maybe change, um, the definition of limited food prep so that it can be allowed from a cart, it's gonna end up looking more like that black trailer you saw at the very end, because you still need handwashing and wear washing, et cetera. So, um, again, and it, just this past year, and in twenty twenty, there was another movement to, um, modify the definition of limited food prep to add boil corn vending. It didn't go through, but there's definitely been the interest. And, um, you know, every time things go into, um, getting put into bills and stuff, if there's interest in that and enough people supporting it, there's obviously the, um, the, the possibility of that changing.
Great, thank you. And, uh, my last question is regarding specifically the enforcement and citation of, uh, street vendors and how that is handled. What does that actually look like? Um, Eve, uh, you mentioned that it's not active enforcement, um, there's education around it. Um, but what happens when, uh, one of your inspectors is, is, you know, on, on route to, uh, to, you know, their, uh, scheduled, uh, uh, site visits or, or whatever it is, um, and they see a, a, a corn vendor? Um, how is that handled? Um, what does that citation look like, and how does that impact, um, the individual?
So we, we try to, again, uh, provide information first. So if it's the first time we see them, we normally give them a warning, and say, you know, kind of, um, assume that maybe they didn't know they needed a permit, and explain to them that a permit's required, how they can get a permit, and, and do all of that educational, um, approach. But then, we, we do need to follow up. If we see them again, or we're getting more complaints about it, and they continue, um, operating without a permit, then there are other enforcement tools we must use. And we do have authority to issue citations, which obviously requires them to, um, to go to court. So we, we, and we have done that in the past. How does it affect them? You know, it is a misdemeanor. So violations to the Health and Safety Code, they're not infractions, they're misdemeanors. And this is why we use that as a last, um, tool. It's not our first thing that we do, because our focus is always education, but we do have that authority. Um, and, you know, we try to warn them at that time, you know? If we see you again, we're gonna give you a citation, and it's for a misdemeanor. So don't do that. Um, you know, it's, uh, nothing that we enjoy doing. As a matter of fact, it's, uh, probably the, the thing I hate doing the most in my job, and I have done it. Uh, but we always try to avoid that with education and guidance.
I, I would just like to add that, that this is, um, enforcement can vary from jurisdiction to jurisdiction. Um, there are, uh, health agencies or co-compliance agencies that will impound equipment. We do have the authority to do that. We do have the ability to throw away food. Um, that has been a practice in, in some jurisdictions, and at one point it was our practice here. Um, you know, if we have concerns that there's contaminated food, or, you know, we have an obligation, and so it could potentially be thrown out. Um, some jurisdictions have vehicles where they actually, but they have trailers that'll pick up equipment and haul them off to a, a yard, no different than impounding like a, a vehicle that's parked at a red zone for a period of time. Uh, but, but for us, that's, that's generally our approach. Um, I will also share with, with the group that, you know, statewide and my counterparts and other, other jurisdictions, this is a, a fairly hot topic. Um, you know, I travel and I, I see corn vendors and, and illegal food vendors that are out there, and, and, um, you know, it gets to a point where, you know, we do receive a lot of complaints, and we have to, we have to respond to those complaints, and, um, you know, our, our initial approach, and Graciela and I talked about it this morning, you know, we need to get the information out to the community. We need to maybe perhaps issue a few press releases, uh, do any outreach. If the City of Oxnard, you know, you know, would like us to, you know, do some outreach to a particular group of people, we would be happy to attend and, 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 uh, share that information, so.
Thank, thank you so much. Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a, um, quick comment. Um, uh, the information presented was very informative, I appreciate it. There was a lot of discussion about the Health and Safety Code, and I just wanna make sure my understanding is correct, that, that the Health and Safety Code in this particular area that deals with food preparation is strictly the purview of, of the county, uh, registered environmental health specialist, and that the city does not have the ability to enforce those codes. Is that correct, Stowe?
That's correct.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, and I, we will do everything we can to be good partners, but sometimes there are gonna be times when we're gonna need the assistance of the county to, um, you know, effectively enforce particular codes that are, they're, you know, restricted to the county, to a specialist who's got the training to do it, so. But I do appreciate all your time and effort, and the presentation was very informative.
Thank you. Uh, again, you know, I wanna thank, um, Roger Brooks, you know, from Code Compliance, um, Mr. Charles, and also Garcia. And I also wanna commend, you know, the individuals that, that are residents, um, not just in Oxnard, but throughout, that wanna make a living, entrepreneurs, they wanna work, you know, and make a living. So it's important, you know, that they find out what the rules are, they, where to get the permits. And of course, then they can always, uh, go to Environmental Health in the County of Ventura and other counties. And one of the things I think that was important, and Ms. Garcia mentioned, that this is in Spanish and English also, which I think is extremely important. And also, uh, the question I'm gonna ask, or maybe for the public who's watching this, you don't have to be a vendor, you don't have to be somebody selling anything. But if you wanna get educated, I'm sure that you can contact your office, Environmental Health, to get information, so they can convey that information to other folks. And it was mentioned before that potentially, you know, most of the time, they, they believe that the, the city government, county government is picking on those individuals that are trying to make a living. But this way, if they wanna get educated, whether they're vendors, non-vendors, or whatever, the general public can contact you and, and get additional information. Is that correct, Ms. Garcia and Charles?
Yes. Yeah, we're, we're available for, um, questions to the, the vendors, the public, um, anybody who wants to learn about the requirements and why, we're, we're available.
Uh, Mrs. Golden, and then Tehran.
Yes, thank you. I just had two questions that come up a lot from the public that I was hoping you could restate. And I know that you've said them before, Garcia Ella. But if you can state it again, there is a lot of assumption that when we made the changes to be consistent with SB 946, that corn vending would be allowed. And so I was hoping you could take a moment to explain what that actually was about. And the second question that we get asked a lot is, well, we see people sell these in other cities, why can't we sell them here? You know, you go to a Laker game, or you go to another game, and you walk out to cart schools full of these, and they, they're not being enforced. And I know you hit on that as well. But if you can just restate that, so we're all on the same page, that would be helpful.
Yes. So the Senate Bill 946, which dealt with the sidewalk vendors, will specifically talks about, which is Section 51037, that says that nothing in that chapter, so nothing that was added to the, to the government code, which is what happened when this bill went in, it says that nothing in this chapter shall be construed to affect the applicability of chap of Part 7, commencing with Section 113700 of Division 104 of the Health and Safety Code, to a sidewalk vendor who sells food. And basically, that section that's referenced is the California Health and Safety Code related to retail food sales. So it's saying, everything that's required for a food vendor is still required. So nothing in that bill was meant to change those requirements. And that's what needs to be, you know, kind of kept in mind, so that the permits and, you know, all the requirements that come with the permit are still in place, and nothing in that bill was meant to change that.
Thank you. And then the second question about, well, it happens everywhere else?
And it is. And it's happening in a lot of places. And I think, you know, for me, for this county, we don't want it to get to the point where it's so out of control. And it's important to address it as we see it. It is very frustrating to go to other areas and find it just all over the place, for many reasons. And of course, you know, there's the problems with, with competition with other restaurants and that. But for me, it's always the, the public health. It's not safe to eat from operators, from people that cannot wash their hands. As simple as that, that is super basic food safety concern for me. So yeah, I see it when I go to other areas. And it's very frustrating for me to see it. Why is it happening? Is it that they don't know? Or is it that they have no resources? And it's really difficult when the problem has gotten so out of control, and the, the different jurisdictions don't have the resources to deal with it. So I think that's, that's primarily the problem in many areas.
And I may add that it is sometimes dependent on the neighboring cities. So you may have a city in Los Angeles that has strong support and a good relationship with their code compliance officers as well. And then, you know, just like in our county, we have different cities that may, may have multiple resources that would be, you know, they may be more friendly towards food vendors or vendors, street vendors in general. So it really depends on the level enforcement and the partnership that you may have with each jurisdiction.
But the bottom line is, we're all, we're all under the same state guidelines, and it applies everywhere. It's just dependent upon resources of how it's enforced or held to those standards.
Yes. And it's illegal in those counties as well.
Thank you. We have a council member, Turan, followed by Parello, additional questions?
Yes, thank you for the additional time, Mr. Mayor. Just a quick question. I'm looking at our agenda, how it's worded here. And I just want to make sure it'd be okay to ask a quick enforcement question specific to the city of Oxnard of Mr. Brooks. Is that allowed with this item?
Yes, yes, absolutely.
Thank you. And just very, very quickly, Mr. Brooks, as a follow up to our previous time that this item came up before this council, have there been any subsequent enforcement actions against mobile vendors or corn vendors since our last meeting?
For, I'm not aware of any complaints received in reference to corn vending. So I would say no on corn vending. There has been some car wash vending complaints received that we've handled, but very few.
Okay. And just to finalize that, the statement that was made at our previous meeting was that there would be no more pursuing of the vendors, specifically the corn vendors. And has that stance started yet? Or is that, is there a process that happens before that's official?
No, the procedure of that we're going to, we're not going to be doing any proactive, we're only responding to complaints, that was put into place immediately at that count, that day of the council meeting.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman Parello.
I'd like to follow up on the question just asked. But if there is an item that the Environmental Health Department for the county would say is illegal, we're not going to wait and not, not pursue it. Is that correct, Mr. Brooks?
That's a loaded question. Every
I'm not, I'm not trying to put you on the hot spot, but I don't want it. This has been a tremendous meeting and a tremendous presentation. But I don't want people to walk away and not understand what's going on. If the young lady from County Environmental Health said, the things that happen in this county, we want to make sure they're okay, nobody gets sick. But we see something that is not okay, we're not going to just wait for a complaint. Is that fair?
Let me, let me, let me answer, since it was my direction. So what we're going to do is, first of all, we will respond to complaints. And if we see things, we will have discussions with the vendors, but we're not proactively chasing them. And if they turn and evade us, we will not engage in a foot pursuit.
Okay, thank you. The second question was the question from the Mayor Protem, with respect to enforcement. So this is your county rules and enforcement. Does it take the Sheriff's Department to pursue the enforcement? Or can the Oxnard Police Department pursue the enforcement? That's for the county environmental people.
Typically, we would work with usually the code compliance officers in that regard. For us, we have the knowledge base on what the Health and Safety Code requires. As you can tell by the presentation, it's quite involved, and there's some nuances there. So it would really fall on Environmental Health Division. If there is a local ordinance that speaks to illegal food vending in a particular city or county and incorporated area, the co-compliance could also issue citations if they wish. But typically, that would fall under our purview.
Thank you very much. And the last question, there is often a cat and mouse game going with knowing the work schedules of the governmental agency, city and county, and operations that operate late into the evening. Are there random checks late into the evening by environmental health, if these food vending sites are operating according to the rules?
No. There are times where we are out in the evenings under special circumstances. We will coordinate, let's say, an event. If it's decided we're going to coordinate with a code compliance officer, we will go out on an evening event, and we'll do, you know, for lack of a better term, roundup, or we'll do investigation on complaints that have been occurring over the weekends or evenings. And we will set up an operation where we can, we do those inspections at that time. But typically, we're out during normal business hours. We do have staff that are out on the weekend, typically at community events and things like that, that we're doing inspections at. So if it is after hours, we do like to coordinate with law enforcement, just for safety purposes. So if we're going to do an event like that, it's definitely coordinated.
Thank you very much, Mr. Gankel and Ms. Garcia. Appreciate the presentation. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager.
Yes, I want to thank our colleagues from the county for providing a very informative presentation to us. And I have one final question. So if I invent a recipe that boils corn with the husk fully intact, would that become a possibility?
Today, the way the code is, no. But if it, if it changes, then, then yes. Right now, it's only roasted, roasted corn that would be allowed.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I really appreciate Environmental Health in the County of Ventura. Thank you. Very informative information. And thank you again for being here today.
Of course.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And of course, this is a receiving file. We don't, we don't vote on this item. So thank you so much, council members. And, and again, now what we're going to do is go right into the opening ceremonies. And this is going to be the, we're going to start off with a pledge of allegiance. And what I'd like to do today is come up with a moment of silence. And I want everybody to join me with a moment of silence for all the individuals who have lost their lives across the United States to the unforeseen violence. So please, follow me to the pledge of allegiance. Thank you so much. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which stands one nation, under, under liberty and justice. Thank you. And our next item is a, this is a proclamation designating the week of April 18 and 21 of, of the year 2021 as National Crime Victims Week. And we're going to have, I'm going to read a proclamation to Mr. Paul Lemos. But before we do that, we have a speaker that'd like to share some information on this item. And this is Terry Tellis. Terry Tellis, you got three minutes?
Terry Tellis. You may unmute by pressing star six.
Can you hear me?
Yes, Terry, thank you. You have three minutes to speak.
Hi, my name is, thank you so much, Mayor and council members for having us here today. My name is Teresa, or Terry Teas, as you stated. My family were victims of violence, homicide in 2017. My brother Angel Ortiz was murdered on King Street. He left behind four boys, three birth, three birth boys, and one adopted son, and the mother of his children. Our family has been greatly grieved because of this tragedy. He was a machinist in Oxnard, grew up in Oxnard and Port Huaynimi. He was a beloved coach at the Boys and Girls Club, Greater Oxnard and Port Huaynimi. He also coached Little League Baseball at Port Huaynimi Little League. He was beloved by many, many people in the city of Oxnard, South Oxnard and Port Huaynimi because of his coaching. Angel grew up and didn't have such a great life, but he made the best of it, and managed to raise and provide for his son and his, the mother of his sons. He was a sole provider. I want to thank you guys for recognizing this week, us victims, we don't get to talk much or spread. When it happens, we're busy grieving and going through what we're going through. But I also want you guys to remember that, not just during this week, to remember what happened to us, I really hope and pray that the city of Oxnard recognizes and realizes that there's a real issue out in our community. My brother's homicide is still not, there has been no arrest for his murder. So on top of grieving, every single year, on April 8, our family still knows that there is some murderers out there that are still living and walking around this community. And we'd like for you guys to start to think about this further, because we don't want any other family in the city of Oxnard to suffer what we've suffered. The best thing that I can think of that haunts me every day is when I looked at my nephew's face, looked in their faces, and told them that their hero was not going to come home that night. We had to tell them to say, we had to hold them as they said goodbye to my brother. One of them going limp from crying because he was begging his father to pull through. I want you guys to think about that in the couple months to come and the years to come, that there's still murderers out there, and they need to be arrested. And we think that in order for that to happen, the $10,000 reward that the city of Oxnard offers needs to be raised. That's not enough for people to speak up. I know you guys are honoring and remembering, but I need to mention that because there's a lot of families, 15 people died in 2017 because of violence. And a lot of those murderers are not solved. And we need murderers to get off of these streets. So thank you, guys. We appreciate that. Please remember my brother's name. His name is Angel Ortiz. He was a father, he was a brother, he was an uncle, he was a beloved coach. And think about that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Tellis, and our condolences. Before I continue, I want to share, I got a notice from the city clerk that if you're watching this meeting today, that the public hearing for M1, the recovery of nuisances abatement, has been rescheduled to May the 18. So if you're waiting for that, it's been rescheduled. Thank you so much. And now what I'd like to do is, is I'm sure that Paul Lemos is on listening. So I have a proclamation, the National Crime Victims Rights Week, April 18 to 24, 2021, whereas being a victim of crime can be frightening experience, and whereas progress is improving the treatment of crime victims has been made through efforts of thousands of victims and survivors who have turned their experience into a force of positive change, ensure that others can receive justice, meaningful assistance, and compassionate treatment. And whereas honoring the rights of victims, including the rights to be heard, and to be treated with fairness, dignity, and respect, and working to meet their needs, rebuild, rebuild their trust in the criminal justice and social service systems, and whereas justifying, identifying, excuse me, reaching and serving all those victims of crime, especially from those groups that often have made access to healing services and avenues to justice is essential. And whereas our community continues engagement with the challenges faced by victims of crime, will ensure that the progress made to date is not lost, and that new grounds are broken to gain greater justice and healing for all victims. And whereas National Crime Victims Rights Week provides an opportunity to recommit and ensure accessible and appropriate services are offered to all crime victims. And whereas the city of Oxnard Police Department is hereby dedicated to supporting victims and survivors in the aftermath of crime, building trust among our clients, collaborating with other services providers, and engaging the community in response to those efforts. Now therefore, I, John Cesar Agosa, Mayor of the City of Oxnard, do hereby proclaim the week of April 18 to 24, 2021, as National Crime Victims Week, reaffirming the city commitment to creating a victim service and criminal justice response, and assist all victims of crime during Crime Victims Week, and throughout the year, and expressing a sincere gratitude and appreciation for those community members, victim services providers, and criminal justice professionals who are committed to improving our response to all victims of crime, so that they may, may find relevant assistance and support and justice and peace. In witness thereof, I here set my hand in the cause of great seal of the city of Oxnard, Oxnard to be affixed this 20th day of April, 2021. This is Mayor John Cesar Agosa. And I hope that we probably have Mr. Paul Lemos, that's going to share with us some, some comments. And Paul, I have a, a proclamation that you can pick up tomorrow morning at City Hall, and I have it here in front of me. And thank you so much for the opportunity to share this item. Paul?
Mayor, Mr. Lemo is not available at the moment. However, we do have Sharon Gills from our police, Oxnard Police Department, who's going to speak?
Oh, good. Sharon?
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, Mayor. How are you? I just wanted to say that I, I'm going to accept this proclamation for Paul. Thank you, Paul, for bringing this before the council. I'm honored as the commander with the Oxnard Police Department to accept this proclamation. I also want to tell the public that the Oxnard Police Department believes that every victim deserves justice and assurance for their safety, well-being, and welfare will be protected. We at the Oxnard Police Department dedicate a whole area in the police department to victims of horrible crimes, such as sex crimes, domestic violence. And we take that very seriously. So I thank you all. And thank you again, Paul. I truly do appreciate that.
And thank you to the Oxnard PD. Thank you so much for accepting the proclamation. Thank you. Okay, our next item we have is, I hope Isabel Ayala is probably going to join us. But I'd like to share a couple of items here before this evening. I'm honored that Councilwoman Basuhas asked the Coastal Keepers to be present with this proclamation for Earth Day. Keeping our environment clean and green and beautiful has been a priority of mine for, and our family, and our children, for our community. This year marks the 51st anniversary of Earth Day. We're happy to announce that Isabel Ayala, the founder of the Coastal Keepers, will accept the proclamation virtually. Coastal Keepers is a new local grassroots organization, whose hard work, community outreach, and volunteer acts and days whose hard work, community outreach and volunteer acts and days is helping Oxnard promote the change that we want to see. Especially for the Armond Beach, the beauty of Armond Beach and the wildlife that lives there is a legacy for Coast Keepers in helping the city preserve. So I'd like to share this, uh, proclamation at this time and read a couple of items and then present the proclamation. This is a proclamation of Earth Day, April 22nd, 2021. Whereas the city of Oxnard is celebrating Earth Day on April 22nd, 2021, recognizing that a healthy environment is a cornerstone of a thriving community, a vigorous and local economy. And whereas the first Earth Day was enacted in 1970 and engaged over 20 million Americans to advocate for a cleaner environment. And where Earth Day now has become a global event and has highlighted most of the most critical environment issues. And where this year's theme of Restore Our Earth acknowledges a commitment to raising awareness, restoration, encouraging our residents to examine their own personal impact on the environment. And whereas we encourage every resident of the city of Oxnard to help conserving and protecting the environment by way of green activities such as recycling, water, energy conservation, tree planting, active, active education about environment issues. Whereas the Coast Keepers, it's an example of local citizens advocating for a cleaner, more beautiful community and ecosystem, including building communities, outreach for the environment, fundraising, collaborating with the Oxnard and the city, uh, city of Oxnard and the city of Port Wainimi to clean up our initiatives, clean up initiatives. Now therefore, I, John Caesar Argos, a mayor of the city of Oxnard, hereby proclaim April 22nd, 2021 as Earth Day. And encourage all residents to identify what they can personally do to protect the environment and make Oxnard a cleaner and greener city. And when is thereof, I here set my hand and cause a great seal to the city of Oxnard to be affixed on the, on this 20th day of April, 2021. Thank you. And, and hopefully we can have Isabel Ayala share a couple of words.
Ms. Ayala, Isabel Ayala, you may unmute by pressing star six.
Thank you so much, City of Oxnard Mayor Zaragoza, City Manager Alex Swin and City Councilwoman Gabby Basuo for this honor. Uh, my name is Isabel Ayala and I'm a resident of South Oxnard, as well as one of the many founding members of Coastal Members, Coastal Keepers. For years now, South Oxnard has been left behind on some levels and we decided to take action to address the trash issues, climate crisis and the lack of equity available to the area. As we continue in our efforts for the betterment of our beaches, community and home, we are humbled by the amount of support we have received. Thank you to all of the Coastal Keepers watching tonight, showing up to cleanups and those who have donated more than their time to the cause. To our community members who have supported us thus far, we thank you. That list includes Reach and Mayor Gama, Friends of Ormond Beach, Surf Rider Ventura County, the Nature Conservancy, the Audible Society, the Port of Wainimi, Zohair and Willhouse, as well as Cal State Channel Island student organizations. As stewards of our city and planet, we hope to bridge the gap between policymakers and citizens to keep the 805 coast clean and beautiful to reflect the ecosystem, community and environment. Our main form of engagement is on Instagram and all are welcome to connect with us on there at our handle. Um, we'll provide updates on our cleanups, educational workshops, workshops, as well as opportunities to make a difference in the city of Oxnard. We also want to invite the public to our collaboration cleanup this Saturday at 9:00 AM with Surf Riders Ventura County, uh, for our celebration of Earth and our cleanup at Port Wainimi Beach. Thank you again for this honor and happy Earth Month, everyone.
Thank you so much. And Councilwoman Basu, do you want to share a couple of words?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Um, it's very, very, very interesting how I met the Coastal Keepers. It was, um, actually the Surf Rider Foundation that put me in contact with them. And after I met them and kind of understood a little bit of what they were trying to do, I actually had a one-on-one meeting with them. Um, and I was very pleasantly surprised to hear that these young individuals, um, were from the south of Oxnard. And I was really, really excited to have met them because we have never, or I have, don't know of anybody that has kind of organized in order to help keep the south of Oxnard and Ormond Beach clean. And they are actual Oxnard residents, which was, I was, I was extremely excited about. And I told our city manager, Alex, you've got the group. Um, you know, let's back them up and let's see what we can do, um, for them and us to be able to come to a collaborative effort, um, and do some good in the south of Oxnard. So with that, I really, really want to thank them. Um, they have been a strong force for the south end of Oxnard, cleaning Armond Beach. And if you do follow them on Instagram and Twitter, you will see they are active every week. They've even gone ahead and done some homeless outreach. And I am more than appreciative to them. And just, I make sure you guys really, really keep in touch because Coastal Keepers, they're going to next big thing here in Oxnard for us. So thank you, Isabel, for being here with us today.
Thank you so much, Councilwoman. And Isabel, we're going to have the resolutions going to be ready for you. You can pick it up tomorrow morning here at City Hall and, uh, and thank you again for, for Earth Day and keeping our cities clean and, and entire world for that matter. Thank you so much. Thank you. Okay, um, our next item is going to be, um, this is item, uh, G, this is, uh, public comments not on the agenda. And we have several speakers that'd like to speak today. So we're going to start off with Armando Delgado, followed by Douglas Partello. Armando Delgado, three minutes and then Douglas Partello.
Armando Delgado? Mr. Delgado?
Yes, hello. Sorry, I have some technical difficulties.
No problem. Thank you. You have three minutes to speak.
Well, thank you so much. Uh, believe it or not, I just walked in the door. I just logged on and, and I was asked to unmute. So here we go. So, um, as of last week, the carpenters across the nation, um, went on a, um, national tax day, or I'm sorry, national tax fraud day of action. And, uh, for us, it's, we decided to share information about a public awareness campaign, uh, letting everyone know what tax fraud means to communities. It impacts, uh, our, our first responders. It impacts our public services. It impacts, uh, the entire community and everything that, that we do. Uh, tax fraud is one of the biggest issues that the carpenters and tradesmen alike are fighting across the nation. It is about cheating contractors, whether it be a private project or public project, the misclassification of the workforce, the, the misrepresentation or e- even the tax allocations that they, or they did never deduct. Those taxes collected from income, uh, from workers who are working for cash pay affect us drastically. That is money that could be collected and spent wisely in, in every one of our areas of the community. We had an opportunity to help out a local little league. And we saw firsthand how tax fraud impacts a small community, a, a city like Oxnard. Parks are dry, uh, grass is, is, is no longer grass, it's just dirt. Uh, fences are rundown, play, the children's play areas are, are rundown and it's, it's money that could be well spent. Um, but I don't want to go too far into the weeds about tax fraud and our day of action. This week is known as National Crime Victims Rights Week. And we want to let people know that the, the crime committed here is from cheating contractors who fail to pay proper tax, wage theft and even misclassifying workers and it's basically wage theft. And the victims here, at the end of the day, end up being the city, the residents of Oxnard. Those wage theft and tax fraud prevent taxes being collected to help out the community. And in this week, we've made it known, last week we made it known. And you'll see more of our social media, public awareness campaign as we deal with district attorneys, as we deal with, um, community leaders and elected officials. Tax fraud impacts everyone. Thank you for your time. Um, and that's all we have.
Thank you, Armando. Our next speaker is Douglas Partello, followed by Hendry Avrado Sapien. Douglas Partello.
Mr. Partello?
Hello?
Hi, you have three minutes to speak. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Sorting out the LND, the Land State Maintenance District Mass began with the NBS contracted, initiated by Greg Nyhoff in May 2015. The report had many key findings, a few of which are the partial database used to prepare annual assessments role is incomplete. There are major deficits and some surpluses in the LND funds. General use areas were included in the LNDs, which is illegal, by the way. Some were dissolved after those areas were taken out and there was nothing left. Victoria Estates had been paying HOA fees and paying LND assessments at the same time. Once Gonzalez Road was taken out, there was nothing left. The city never came inside to do the landscaping, but was charging assessments. Then the city wanted to take the 473,000 and surplus and put it into the general fund. The residents had to fight for what was rightfully theirs and got $1,200 each back in refund. When NBS contracted in 2015 to clean up this colossal mess, they were to train staff to take over the management of the LNDs. And here we are almost six years later, paying NBS to do work that seems we have no one that can be trained to do. So we pay city staff and NBS both. So here we are today with our public landscaping, a total disaster, more questions than answers, like the secret admin fee audit. Two reasons given for not releasing the admin fee audit and not pass the smell fest. One, draft exemption. This only applies to documents non-rented. Attorney, attorney-client privilege. This audit was not initiated by the city attorney, but rather Greg Nyhoff. It was not reported to the city attorney, but rather Michael Moore. My recent public information request denied after stalling for a month. Finally, an answer by Jason Zaragoza, Assistant City Attorney. Reason given, this document was discussed in closed session, so it can't be given to the public. There is no ongoing litigation or any other valid reason. So by this rationale, anything the city does not want the public to see, they just have to discuss it in closed session. How convenient would that be? We paid for it and we have a right to see it. Much like the infrastructure utility fees, the city just covers up things until someone takes them to court and a judge forces them to obey the law and do right by the taxpayers. What are they hiding? It took them 10 months to come up with this document that could be easily done in a week. We hear lots of talk about transparency and accountability, but until we see our current city leaders actually act upon those words, they are just words. Sunshine claims and this audit needs to see the light of the day. Only then can we address our public landscaping and regain some trust with our city leaders. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is, um, Hendry Avrado Sapien, followed by Jacvia. Hendry Avrado Sapien.
Mayor, Mr. Sapien is not available. Mr. Jacvia is also not available.
Okay.
And Jean Tong is also not available.
Okay.
And we do have Max Guinness on the line.
Max, you got three minutes?
Max, you may unmute by pressing star six.
Thank you, Mayor Zaragoza and city council members. Um, I'd like to tell you about my friend, Jim Pagels. Jim is 29 and after college, he worked as a writer before discovering a passion for economics, a passion we share. As a PhD student at the University of Michigan, his research focuses on urban economics, how to make cities more affordable, vibrant and safe. When the pandemic turned everything remote, he returned to Washington DC, a city he loved. Jim bikes everywhere and two Fridays ago, he bikes to get his vaccine. He tweeted an economics joke about the dangerous route he had to take, saying, quote, "Had to bike through a roundabout over a highway to get my COVID jab." Lifespan maximization function is clearly perfectly well calibrated. Later that night, he was biking through Northwest DC when a motorist hit him and the car beside him from behind. He was pushed into the intersection where he was hit by two other cars. By the time Jim arrived in the hospital, he was dead. Now, I'm not here to tell you that I'll miss the economics discussions or chess games I enjoyed with Jim as much as I will. I'm here to do what Jim would do if the same thing happened to one of his friends. Jim would tell you that Oxnard bicyclists encounter the same dangers as DC bicyclists, if not worse. He'd say how crazy it is that DC commuters are eight times more likely to cycle than Oxnard commuters, even though our weather is so much nicer. He cites studies finding that protected bike lanes increase the rate of bicycling and avert fatalities for cyclists and motorists alike. Jim would remember to tell a personal story. Like how scary it is when I bike on Victoria in Oxnard, where I live, directly adjacent to motorists driving 60 miles per hour. And he'd make sure to connect the dots to our exclusionary zoning policies that require residents to live so far from jobs and services that roads end up dominated by vehicles. Vehicles like the ones that killed him. People who want to swap car trips for bike trips, whether for the planet, their health or their pocketbook, they shouldn't have to worry about ending up like my friend Jim or the 200 bicyclists who are hit by cars in Ventura County every year and disproportionately in Oxnard. You can fix this. You can prioritize dense, mixed-use housing and protected bike lanes in the general plan.
Thirty seconds.
You can end family zoning codes that push us farther apart and into cars. You can end parking minimums that force cars onto the streets with each new home. You can pass resolutions in support of state legislation that ends the dangerous sprawl and vehicle dominance across California. Please take action so that the deaths of, of people like Jim become exceptions, not expectations. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Pat Brown, followed by last speaker Rohan Ebanks. Pat Brown.
Ms. Pat Brown? Ms. Brown, you may unmute by pressing star six.
Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. You have three minutes to speak.
Yes, um, this is Pat Brown. I'm the neighborhood chair for Five Points Northeast Neighborhood. And I'm speaking tonight on, at this time, on a topic that is in my neighborhood. And so I feel that I'm responsible for this. We have on Seventh Street that, uh, runs, um, across Oxnard Boulevard and, and also it goes east, uh, over a set of, extra set of railroad tracks and, uh, down onto Commercial, uh, towards Woolly Road. And the trucks seem to be going in there as, uh, from Oxnard Boulevard, um, as well as out onto Oxnard Boulevard from Seventh Street. And I've been wondering why, since I've been complaining about this and nothing ever gets done. And then I came to the realization this morning, when I was there at the gas station, uh, filling up with gas for my car, I, I noticed that there was a sign there that says, um, it gives an arrow east and, or an arrow north and an arrow south onto Oxnard Boulevard for the trucks. So they are welcomed coming out onto Seventh Street and going either north or south on Oxnard Boulevard, right in the middle of town. This is totally unacceptable. I don't know why somebody put that sign there, but they shouldn't have. They should have put a, a sign before they got that far, before they got to the railroad tracks with their big trucks coming out, that they're supposed to go the other way and go south onto Woolly Road and then, uh, east if they have, if they're going, uh, to, you know, to, um, the freeway, they can go east and then north on Rose or preferably on Rice Avenue. But this is, is causing a, a terrible traffic problem. The street on Seventh Street is only made for cars and it is not wide enough for trucks. I have seen trucks coming out and trucks going in at the same time, trying to. And, and if a car is there trying to make a left-hand turn to go south on Oxnard Boulevard, uh, they're going to get belated. they're going to get belated. Somebody can't, they can't do both at the same time with the trucks and a car in there waiting to make a left turn at the same time. It's just not wide enough. So either we've got to fix the street, Seventh Street, and make it a street for the trucks to go in and out, which I prefer they don't, because the city allowed us to have a whole group of condominiums in there on Seventh Street. And so the trucks are constantly barreling, going in and out right in front of their condominiums.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Rohan Ebanks.
Mayor, Mr. Ebanks is not available.
Not available? Okay. So then, then our next item on the agenda is going to be the report of the city manager. And the city manager's a COVET 19 update for the director of emergency. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have a few updates this week around the pandemic. If we're going to get the slides up. First one you'll see is a page at the county public health department's website that answers frequently asked questions with regard to what does it mean to be in the current orange tier. The website is VenturaCountyRecovers.org. And there's so many questions there about can I get together with my friends or family? What about weddings? Can private event venues open? Swimming pools, outdoor live events, amusement parks, bowling? Can I play bingo? The list goes on and on. So if you have a specific question regarding something you'd like to do, that is the website to find answers easily. Again, VenturaCountyRecovers.org. Next, as I'm sure most of us have heard in the news, everyone 16 and above, years old and above, is now eligible to receive the vaccine. You do need to make an appointment. Easiest place right now on the internet is, the site is myturn.ca.gov, or you can call 833-422-4255. And they can provide service in English and Spanish. So we still encourage everyone who's eligible, which again is everyone who is 16 years of age and above, to register and proceed to get your vaccination, please. Again, as a reminder, here in Oxnard, we have the Rose Avenue Clinic. That is the site that was formerly the Babies R Us store. That's a pretty large site off of Rose Avenue. There's also one at the South Oxnard Public Health Office at Center Point Mall. Same thing, schedule at myturncalifornia.gov or call that phone number, 833-422-4255. The county public health department is also doing pop-up vaccines, you know, small sites around the county, including here in Oxnard. And they have the schedule at their websites, also on our website. But as you can see, for example, with this week, yesterday, they had a site here in Oxnard at Dearly Park. Tomorrow, there's a site in the city of Fillmore, Friday in Santa Paula, and then Saturday, back here in Oxnard at the Mission Produce Building at 2901 Camino del Sol. Again, it's best if you register, but they're setting up these mobile sites to make it more convenient for people to get their vaccinations. So we continue to encourage everyone to get your vaccinations if you haven't done it already. And then the other vaccination site at the South Winds Youth Center, that was a partnership with Albertson's and Vaughn's, thanks to Councilmember Lopez. They're still right now in the process of providing, also for people ages 16 and older. Same thing, though, you've got to make an appointment. With regard to the various relief programs, the rent program is still active. Again, that's for tenants and landlords, and you can get help there. That phone number is 833-430-2122. The information is also available at the city's main page. Services available in English and Spanish as well. And a reminder, FEMA is offering assistance for funeral services incurred if the unfortunate death was caused by COVID. And you can apply at FEMA. So their phone number is 844-684-6333. And their hours are 9:00 AM to 9:00 PM Eastern Standard Time. So that means earlier here, right? So that means 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM California time, and you can call FEMA to get information if you need assistance with paying for funeral services due to COVID. Then as a reminder, we will begin enforcement again, or resume, I should say, street sweeping enforcement starting in June. We are spending the rest of April and all of May to notify our residents. I know it's been a long time, but now that our unemployment rate is finally starting to lower and people are starting to go back to work, and not everyone, but most people and young people are starting to go back to school, we should be able to sweep our streets again, which is mandated by the state to keep our storm sewers clean. So that will begin this June, on June 1st. And as always, a reminder, we remain in this pandemic. It is not over. So please continue to wear your face covering when you're out and about. Continue practicing social, physical distancing, and continue to wash your hands as often as possible. And I know that we're now in the orange tier and more and more things are opening up. And according to the governor, he expects to open the entire economy in mid-June. But even with that, we still continue to encourage people to avoid gatherings in order to stay safe until the pandemic is declared over in our country. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Okay, our next item, and this is a city council and housing authority agency directors. At this time, a member of the legislative body may make a brief announcement, a brief report on its activities, his or her activities. Further, a member of the legislative body may request to schedule or consider an item to be placed on the agenda. And members of the city council, try not, while you have three minutes, try not to exceed the three minutes. But if you need additional time, please let me know. Council members, we have Councilmember Turan.
Thank you, Mayor.
And Lopez, followed by Lopez.
Thank you. I want to update everybody on a few things specific to the city and what I've been up to. But first, I would like to thank the mayor also at the top of the meeting for the pledge of allegiance. He did request a moment of silence for those who have been lost to violence across the nation. I would like to echo that, but also, I have a lot I'd like to say, but to keep it brief, I will just say that I am happy that on some level that justice was served today. But I want to remind folks that justice or injustice remains elsewhere. And I'm hoping we can reflect how as individuals, as communities, and as systems, we are either working toward eradicating injustice and hate, or we are perpetuating it. So I hope people can really think about that with things that are happening across the nation with lives lost senselessly to violence. With that, thank you for that. I just want to mention that the River Park Neighborhood Council will be meeting this week on the 22nd. And if you live in River Park, that is, you're able to attend. There's a Zoom link on the agenda. And if you're just interested in seeing the items that are being presented on, you're also welcome to attend. And the same for Orchard Park, which will be meeting on April the 29th. And I also want to thank members of the community who've been reaching out about issues that they've been encountering in the community. And I am very happy to receive these requests and talk with people and brainstorm about ways we can find solutions out in our neighborhoods and out in our city to really increase our quality of life, no matter where you live or no matter which area you come from. And I am very appreciative of the people reaching out. It really means a lot that people feel that they can engage with their council members and look at us as resources to improve things in our city. And the last thing I'll say is, I want to give two things for our planning commission. Number one, I would like to give thanks to former Chair Deirdre Frank for her service as the chair and also as a member of the planning commission in her time that she's been there. And I was unaware that she had resigned until it was announced. And I just really am thankful for her service to that commission. And lastly, congratulations to the new chair, Daniel Chavez Jr., and vice chair Ronald Arwayho. So thank you very much, Mayor. That is my comments.
Thank you so much. Councilwoman Lopez.
Thank you, Mayor. And I too want to follow in my colleague, Mr. Turan's comments about the verdict that we have all learned by now regarding the murder of Mr. George Floyd. Certainly has brought a lot of emotions, processing time for so many of our community. But I am hopeful that this is one step forward. And I do, I do believe we can all do our part to contribute to the betterment of our community in any way. So I just want to put my sentiment out there for our community, because it has certainly been a long year in so many ways, not, you know, not including the pandemic. So I just wanted to share that comment. In terms of what's had been happening the last week, I did attend the Economic Development Collaborative Meeting. You know, we're seeing slight progress in the rates or the numbers of unemployment, the filing for unemployment in our county, which is certainly a positive sign, a lot more to do. And want to give a shout out to our Economic Development Manager for the work to support our local businesses, small businesses during this process and getting resources and that are available to support those who have been impacted by the pandemic. With those efforts, I just wanted to share some numbers in terms of the grants that our businesses in Oxnard specifically have applied and received. Over 240 businesses in the city have received over $2.5 million in relief assistance. I think, you know, I hope that is certainly helping our businesses remain open. And another shout out just in general to all our staff in our city for helping to move every day, move the city forward every day, especially during this pandemic with the food distributions, the vaccine, the pop-up clinics that are coming up. And just thank you to everyone.
Thank you. Councilwoman Basile.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to go ahead and follow in my colleague's sentiments regarding the verdict today. With that being said, I also want to send my condolences out to the family who lost their 17-year-old son. Yesterday, in the city of Port Juani, there was an incident where a car ramped into some bike list, and we did have some injuries out there. And to the victims' families, I am so, so sorry that this has happened. And it's just very heartbreaking for me, especially considering, and I believe one of the victims was here from Oxnard. So my condolences out to the family. And also, I want to also mention that on April 7th and 8th, I got the opportunity to go out with Chief Benitez, our city manager, and also Senior Officer John McBride out to the Cypress neighborhood. Thank you so much for the, to the police department for all the efforts that you guys have had out there in that neighborhood. I was able to walk the neighborhood, and I was also able to return the following day. And the following day was very eye-opening for me. We actually went around and knocked on doors. The officers gave out information to the neighbors, you know, told them they could call the police, stay anonymous. But what I saw that really, really, you know, put a smile on my face was as I was leaving a particular triplex. And if you've ever been in the Cypress neighborhood, especially on Howell, you will notice that the homes are, they have huge lots and they go really in. So we were talking to the residents there. When I came out of that home, what I saw there, I'm never, ever going to forget. And it's a part of the police officers that I don't think we showcase enough. The police officers that were with us that day had finished doing their side of the street, and there was an ice cream truck that had stopped. And the officers were buying ice cream for the kids. They were buying candy for the kids. And the kids were just so excited. And it's a side of the community that we don't really get to see because we don't get to showcase it. And as we walked further into the park, you had Officer McBride, Senior Officer McBride dancing to a sumba class. And to me, that is what neighborhood policing is about. That is the kind of stuff that we don't get to see happening in our community that I would love to see continuing. And I know that I spoke to city manager Alex, and I told him about all the wonderful stuff that I saw out there. And he is committed to putting additional resources in South Oxnard. And I was more than delighted, more than happy to see our police department. And I wish that we can showcase this more. I know Chief Benitez is here, and I see him on camera. And I know resources are tough, but I think this is really, really a good part that our community doesn't see that we really, again, need to showcase. So thank you so much to our police department for that. And Mayor, that is all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Thank you so much. Our next speaker is Councilmember Andre Goll.
Thank you. Real quickly, hopefully everyone's having a wonderful day. But a couple of things, over the last two weeks, specifically over the last week, I've gotten a few complaints about businesses taking advantage of residents in La Colonia. And to the residents, please note that, you know, this is being worked on. And I'll get to you as soon as I hear something back. Second thing, I had the pleasure, along with the mayor, this Saturday of being at Eastside Little League at Colonia Park. I want to thank everyone who went out to volunteer, especially the Eastside Little League Board. They're always great. They always do it for the love of the community. I want to thank the local carpenters, Local 805. Thank you to the carpenters for all their hard work. Thank you to the businesses, Dixieland, for providing the lumber. And everyone who was out there, the Parks Division in the city. Want to thank Terrell for being out there on his day off. Just shows his commitment to the community at large. So thanks to everyone. And, you know, it was a great day of work and also great food. I want to thank everyone for everything. And I know that community was happy with it. As with anything, you know, things are coming back slowly but surely. Just on my drive home this afternoon, you know, I saw kids. I saw kids at Park of the Soul playing soccer. And what really caught my attention was all the dirt that was flying around. Realistically speaking, the kids were practicing on dirt. There is no grass left. You just saw a humongous pile of dirt flying everywhere. And lastly, although, you know, things are looking a whole lot better, please, one, still wear your mask. And two, you know, avoid large grouping of people. We all want to get back to our daily lives, but it is going to take all of us to work together. I did get a lot of complaints this weekend from a local football game where there was hundreds, maybe even thousands, a thousand people at a particular football game, particular high school football game. So, you know, as a community, we need to work together. There is no I in this. Everything, I understand, we all want to do. We all want to move on with the rest of our lives, but we're not going to be able to do that if we don't work together. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Perellin.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to start off by thanking Ms. Terry Tellis, who commented about her brother, Angel Ortiz. Extremely heartfelt, extremely personal. Anybody that listened to that didn't take a breath back, I don't think you got blood going through your veins. I want to thank Commander Sharon Giles for what she said, taking the reward, accepting the award from Mr. Paul Lemos. I was at the Art Haycock Elementary School with city manager Alex Newen when Ms. Giles was there, Commander Giles, beg your pardon, Commander. Commander Giles was there for a murder, which gets back to Ms. Tellis's comments. There are a lot of unsolved murders in this city. And we can look at it two ways. We got one mass murderer, or we have a lot of people getting away with murder. And I've asked this in the past when I was on neighborhood councils, INCO, INCF, past police chief. And the manager at that time was not too receptive. We have garbage trucks. We have public safety vehicles. We have public works vehicles. We could do some sort of agreement with the bus. The numbers and the names and the information with respect to the people that have been murdered, murdered, not died with natural causes, murdered. And this information could be placed on the side of a truck or a car or something to get this information out. And the reward system, I am grateful that she mentioned the reward system. Our finances, I don't know if the reward should go up. I would think that $10,000 would loosen some tongues. But in this day and age, maybe it's not. But I do want to thank her very much for those comments. We need more people standing up like that. And thank Commander Giles. And our police department, our police department taking guns off the street every day. Still, people are getting killed. And it's tragic because a young man was killed in Port Juani. But it's unfortunate we don't mention the individual that was shot to death in Oxnard. Found him dead in his car after he hit two cars. Somebody else did that. It wasn't self-inflicted. And the person is still walking around with you and me. I want to thank Mr. Armando Delgado for his comments about the theft from the, from the, the contractors not paying their people. But even bigger than that, the bigger issue is people are working for cash under the table, and they don't pay into the system. Now, they're saying something about what goes around comes around. If they get hurt, workers comp's not there. If they apply for social security, what did they pay into it? Everybody's supposed to pay their fair share. And I want to thank you, Mr. Delgado, for bringing that up. Now, update on things in my neighborhood. District 1, there's a walking track in South Bank going at tremendous. I mean, it's extremely impressive. People haven't seen it. They ought to take a look. If that's what's coming to other neighborhood parks, it's going to be a tremendous improvement. There is a issue, and it will be addressed. And I know our city manager's working on it. We have tremendous staff working on it. The situation with respect to the water and the drought. And what are we going to do? Are we going to put in water rationing? Are we going to wait? The chances of rain are slim and none. And last, I need to thank the people that bring these, these commendations up, and we give awards to people for doing work. And the Ormond Beach Award was a tremendous reward, an award for a good deed. But when we do that, we also make the mistake of possibly not remembering the people that have gone before and have been working for not a couple of years, not a few decades, but multiple. And I try to make a list of names. Roma Armbooster, Gene Roundtree, Bill Terry, Gloria Romond, Larry Godwin, Shirley Godwin, Steve Nash, Linda Cowleron, Julie Pena, Pat Brown, Ed Ellis, Sid Patterson, Nancy Patterson, Deidra Frank, Mike, Ms. Einstein, and even former council member Ramirez. A lot of people have been doing cleanups for decades to try to get that place cleaned up. And I wanted to just let their names not go forgotten. People stand on each other's shoulders to accomplish something. We must remember not to stand on each other's backs. And thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, I have a couple of items I'd like to share too. You know, this past weekend, you know, I had the pleasure of visiting the Eastside Little League over at Eastwood Park in North Oxnard. And I want to thank Parks and Recreation Commissioner Paul Lemos for inviting me over. And I was just so happy to see the little kids playing Little League and enjoying the parks and with the warm park, the warm weather with their parents. It's just, it's just great to see the kids playing out again because of the pandemic. And I just want to show, boy, they have some excellent food there at the snack bar too. So also, you know, as mentioned by Councilmember Madrigal, I had the pleasure of being part of the Eastside Little League, Colonia Park Cleanup and Repairs. And as was mentioned, I just want to thank the Southwest 805 Carpenters. They're just excellent job. And also, the materials are donated by Dixieland Company. Councilmember Madrigal, Claudio Olivares, Eastside Little League President. I want to thank Armando again, Delgado, Marvin Booze, the Parks and Recreation Commissioner, Chris Hernandez, and numerous other parents and individuals that were there. So it, it was just great to see all those, the people working, the moms and the dads and the little kids fixing that park. And it was just absolutely great to see them, and it was just a beautiful day for it too. And it was mentioned too, I just want to thank Mrs. Frank for the many, many years that she served in, in the Planning Commission. And numerous of those years was as a chair of the Planning Commission. So thank her again for, for many, many years of work and volunteerism for the Planning Commission. And of course, I want to congratulate Mr. Daniel Chavez, who's a new chair for the Planning Commission. And also, I want to thank the Oxnard PD, Eric Sassegard. I had a family that called me up over on Caliente and Junto Lane that were parking their boat, and they were parking their, their other trucks and so forth in the corner, and people had a really tough time to getting out of that neighborhood and turning left on, on Caliente. And we had almost a really major accident there. And he went and talked to the individuals instead of signing them, which I want to commend, he was proactive. He actually had him move the, the vehicles and the boat to across the street. And Eric is much safer now, and thank you so much for your good work to Oxnard PD. Thank you.
You got it.
Okay. And with that in mind, okay, our, thank you. And then our, I don't see anybody else when they share anything. Okay, our next item is, this is from the city manager's department. And this is the appointment of members to serve as the city's commission on homelessness. But before we start doing that, we have two speakers that like to share some information on that. And that would be Jack Villa and Peggy Rivera. And of course, we're looking to appoint Jack Villa to this, to that commission. Jack Villa and followed by Peggy Rivera.
Mayor, Mr. Jack Villa is not available at this time, and neither is Peggy Rivera.
Oh, they're not available. Okay, so then again, we, as the mayor, with the concurrence of the city council, I want to make the following appointment to the Commission on Homelessness. And that would be Jack Villa, District 3. And with that, you know, I, is there any? We need a vote. Okay, Councilman Perellin followed by, by Councilman Terran.
I will, I will second that, but I would like to make a comment with respect to Mr. Villa. I've known Mr. Villa for quite some time through the organization of the Inner Neighborhood Council Forum and later the Inner Neighborhood Council Organization. I know him to be an individual who shows up to work, and he doesn't shirk the jobs. He stands and will be counted. I know him to have served on the Ventura County Grand Jury. I know him to brought forth issues with respect to the wrongdoings that were going on with organized soccer and the Parks and Recreation, taking advantage of the residents of Oxnard with the organized Parks and Recreation. It was a little bit awkward, but I want to give Mr. Villa all the credit he's due on this. And I wholeheartedly endorse his appointment.
Thank you. Councilmember Terran.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to take a moment to essentially echo what Councilmember Perello has said. For Mr. Villa's nomination to be appointed to the Commission on Homelessness, I just want to share that I certainly support this when it comes to a vote. I hope my, we'll see how my fellow council members vote as well. But Mr. Villa, I had the fortune to serve with him on the Internet, Inner Neighborhood Council Organization Executive Board. He was a chair, and I was a first vice chair. And I think as a team member, he was great, not just with the rest of the executive board, but the general body as a whole, always willing to show up, always willing to go to meetings, always willing to help support people as needed, where needed. And so that's what has certainly impressed me about him, getting to know him through that capacity. But it also goes a little bit further back for me in that when I wanted to restart my dormant neighborhood council a few years ago, after it had not met for nearly four years, I didn't know the system. I didn't know who to turn to. And I was directed to Mr. Villa. And we had a phone conversation where he was incredibly helpful and was able to help me understand the complexities of the issue, the history behind my particular neighborhood, but also the options I had as a constituent, as a resident of my neighborhood. And his willingness to go out of his way to do that really spoke volumes. And so I will always be thankful for him for that because if it wasn't for him in that direction, I may not have started my neighborhood council, which may not have gotten me more engaged in city work. And, and I just really appreciate everything he does for the community, but also what he did for me as an individual. And those are my comments, Mayor. I do support this.
Thank you. And I, again, I'd like to share that I have known Jack for years and years and being a member of the NCO and getting involved in different volunteering events for the city of Oxnard. And he's always a pleasant guy to, to meet. In fact, I went over to a restaurant the other day, and there he was with a big old smile and just sharing with him, how you doing? And he says, doing great, you know, just continued to help the community. So it's, it's an honor for me then to, to then appoint Jack Villa with a second by Mr. Perello, Councilmember Perello. Roll call.
Mayor Protem McDonald.
Yes.
Councilmember Perello.
Yes.
Councilmember Basua.
Yes.
Councilmember Madrigal.
Yes.
Mayor Zaragoza.
Yes.
Councilmember Terran.
Yes.
Councilmember Lopez.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes 7 to 0.
Thank you. Our next item is item J. This is the information consent item, agenda item, excuse me. And there's one to four items. And we do have one public speaker before we, we see if any council members have any information that they need from any one of those one to four items. The person that wants to speak on this is Joey Lukomuski. I'm sorry for, let me spell that, L U K O M S K I. Joey.
Joey? You may unmute by pressing star six. Joey, yes, hi. Thank you. You have three minutes to speak, sir.
Hi, my apologies. I was pressing star nine. My name is Joey Uhasakamsky. I'm the executive director of Bike Ventura. I'm commenting on the local roadway safety plan item and also the sustainable transportation plan for the city of Oxnard. And I just want to say that right now, I'm standing at the corner of Ventura Road and Pleasant Valley Road, and there's about 150 people here standing individual in memory of the 16-year-old boy that was killed while riding his bike. And I just want to say that, you know, this is another tragedy that just really didn't need to happen. And while I think these plans are both good things for the city of Oxnard, I think there are things that you can do more urgently. I noticed another item on this consent calendar are a couple, some funding for road repavement. And I just think that starting today, you need to be asking your staff, okay, if we're repaving any roads, if we're fixing any sidewalks, if we're changing anything on the streets, what are we doing to make it as safe as possible for people walking, people biking, people using wheelchairs? Again, this doesn't happen in Ventura. They've invested a lot of time and energy in designing streets that are better, at least as accommodating all road users, especially the most vulnerable ones. And I just, just feel like I need to bring this to your attention. I really appreciate the council member that mentioned this to you all because I know it's in Port Juani, but these roads are all extensions of roads that, you know, start in Oxnard. And I think that Oxnard, you know, if you all made choices to make roads safer, you know, Juani would fall suit. And that's about it. I have some other comments, but in, in honor of this young man, I'm just going to keep it short, and thank you very much for listening to me.
Thank you. Okay, so we have four items here, consent items.
The recommended action.
Okay, move by, Mayor Protem, second by Councilmember Lopez. Roll call.
Mayor Zaragoza.
Yes.
Mayor Protem McDonald.
Yes.
Councilmember Perello.
Yes.
Councilmember Lopez.
Yes.
Councilmember Madrigal.
Aye.
Councilmember Basua.
Yes.
Councilmember Terran.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries 7 to 0.
Thank you. Our next item, ladies and gentlemen, is a public hearing. And I'd like to share that at this item, this is a, the subject is a True Hilton Hotel Project and appeal of the Planning Commission's decision to approve a planning and zoning permit number 19-500-03, special use permit located at 180 West Espinaud Drive, APN number 142-0310-045, and is subject to certain findings and conditions. Number one, the recommendation that the city council one conduct a public hearing. Two, approve the addendum number one to final mitigated negative declaration number 12001. And number three, adopt a resolution 201, excuse me, 2021 XX, denying the appeal and upholding the Planning Commission's approval of planning and zoning permit number 19500-03, special use permit, subject to certain findings and conditions because the record shows that this evidence is necessary to make all the findings required by the Oxnard Code, City Code, section 16-531, in order to grant a special use permit. And of course, you know, this, we need to start with the clerk's certification and publication and written communications, if any. Madam clerk?
Mayor, there was a legal notice for this public hearing published in Ventura County Vida newspaper on April 1st, 2021. And the city clerk's office did receive written and the city clerk's office did receive written communication on this item and has been forwarded to council for consideration.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Um, thank you, Madam Clerk. And now we have Joe Pearson II, AICP Senior Planner, Scott Kowits, Planning and Environmental Services Manager, and Vito Adomites, Director of Community Development Department. In accordance with Measure M, posted a video presentation regarding the item, and it's available to answer any brief clarifying questions by councilmembers they might have before we take public testimony on this item. Councilmembers? Okay. Councilmember Parello?
Thank you, Mayor. I do have some concerns on this project. With respect to the, uh, staff response grounds for appeal number one, and we talk about the, um, uh, issues that end up, issues that end up including project. Talking about substantially more severe impacts. When we're talking about, and I'm using for examples from watching the progress of the city over several years, that we're going to reduce the required amount of parking. One egregious place that it's always come up that I've never got is at the end of A Street, across from the Oxnard School District, the market. There were reduced parking allowed in that site, and it would be comments at that time from a planning commission at that time was, "Well, if the parking lot's full, that shows business is good." Well, unfortunately, the parking lot is full and business is good, but they're parking in the school district's property across the street. And that's not the kind of thing that I think we do need. Granted, we had the issue with the bicyclists, we have the issues with electric cars, we have the issue with potentially in the future driverless cars, various things. But when we have an issue coming into a development, which is basically a store, you're going to put a hotel, we're requesting to share the parking lot with transit occupant, transit use of the parking lot during the business hours. Person comes to the hotel, they're going to walk all the way from where there was a vacant spot at the furthest extreme, all the way back to the hotel. We have a safe city, but I don't know that that's the wisest thing for us to do. The second, um, item, that there was a complaint, uh, one of the arguments from the appellate, uh, page number 20, the appellant's grounds for appeal two. The appellant has objected to the True Hilton Hotel Project because it includes conditions of approval of 98, 99, 153, inasmuch as they should have completed before the Planning Commission approval. I don't like bait and switch. When something comes in after the Planning Commission has reviewed it and then it gets changed, where do we get an opportunity to review that change? Minor or significant? Where? Only place I'm aware of is somebody puts the money up to make an appeal. The item number 153, I think, is the one that's the most egregious to me. Prior to issuance, is what it says. Prior to issuance of site improvement permit, developers shall provide evidence of the recordation of a reciprocal access and parking agreement with the adjacent property owners. I can bring two cases. We had a church that opened up in the industrial area of Oxnard. Granted, the area was not used. They wanted to put a church in there. But they needed the permission for the overflow parking from all the industrial properties to park on their private property. And the argument was the church would be in service on Sundays and the businesses would be closed on Sundays. There was an accommodation made, much less than perfect. The most recent one is Clinicus at Statham and South Oxnard Boulevard. They wanted accommodation that they could park all the cars needed for the people that come for medical work. And I'm not sure how that works, but at the Elks Club, quite some distance away. Now, Clinicus does good work. But when we make accommodations like this, the people that are coming to this, first come, first served parking, they may have issues with the ability to traverse from where the parking is off-site to where they need to get, similar to what could transpire here. This is why I cannot approve this. I'm going to, uh, support the appeal. But those are my concerns, and I'm very interested to hear how we address issues that come about with restrictions after the Planning Commission has already decided. That's like the horses already got out of the barn and we're going to decide, you know, maybe we should have locked the barn. That's not a way, I think, to run an efficient government. I could be wrong. And I'm waiting to hear an answer. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Vito. Joe or Scott, uh, listen to that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Mr. Kowits, I believe, will be providing some responses to Councilmember Parello.
Okay.
So, uh, Director Adomitis, thank you for that, uh, Mayor, councilmembers. So there are a couple of things. Let me try to unpack them a little bit. There, there were basically two different thoughts that were, I think, that you were sharing with us. One was a concept of, um, reduced parking and how do we do those reviews?
Joe, can you get closer to your, to your mic? We can barely hear you. Thank you.
My apologies about that. Is this, is this better, Mayor?
Okay, I'm sorry.
My apologies. So what, uh, what I was trying to say is, um, I'm going to try to unpack some of the comments there. There seem to be two main concepts that were being shared with us. One was reduced parking, and when is that appropriate? Essentially, what's the process for doing that? And the second item had to do with various conditions of approval and their effectiveness. How, how do we implement those? So, uh, for the benefit of, uh, the, the full council, members of the public, the Oxnard City Code allows a parking study to be provided for any project the Planning Department is processing. And in effect, what we do as part of the, the Planning Department is we look at the minimum, uh, code requirements that we have for off-street parking to determine if facilities are providing what's required by the code or not. And if a development is not providing the total number of parking spaces that are required per the Oxnard City Code from a straight mathematical, um, uh, process, we look at essentially traffic studies, best practices, um, various, uh, documents to help us identify if there are operational considerations that might, uh, lead us to a different number than a strict, uh, calculation from the code. In this case, this application did include a parking study that was provided by the applicant. Our traffic team, uh, so independent, uh, independent traffic team, the city traffic team, reviewed that, uh, traffic study and ultimately concluded that there was enough parking on, uh, this particular shopping center to accommodate the use. That traffic study was shared with the Planning Commission as a whole, and the Planning Commission, uh, found that there was merit in that, uh, particular independent review and the underlying traffic study. If we want to go into the numbers, we can do that. I'm going to refrain from doing so at this point in time. But I'm bringing up that as a process just to address, um, that there is a thought process that goes into, uh, modification to our parking standards. In terms of reviewing, um, conditions of approval, there were, there were three conditions that were specified by Councilmember Parello. Two of them had to do with, uh, uh, transportation and parking placements. Um, and the third one had to do with a reciprocal parking agreement. Reciprocal parking agreement, that was the last one that was mentioned. It was condition 153. That condition already exists out in the shopping center today. We included it within this particular, uh, approval, so it's not lost accidentally as it moves forward. So essentially, it's a redundancy for what already exists today. The, um, the parking plan, uh, conditions number 98 and 99 that are included in this resolution, uh, essentially, what's intended by those conditions is to, um, put forward a parking plan that addresses operational characteristics of the hotel and allow it to be flexible enough that either the Community Development Director or the Public Works Director can modify it in the future if it's not working according to how we think it is going to work. Essentially, it's a living document or a living condition, if you will, to make sure that we're not going to end up with situations where, uh, parking and circulation are pushed out into the public right-of-way. So there is a, um, a, a process, uh, built in to allow our, our directors to, um, make the determination if we need to look into particular situations. That's not that, um, that is consistent with a series of, of conditions of approval that do look for professional staff to implement, um, and make sure that certain requirements are being, um, engaged and certain metrics, um, or characteristics are being, uh, complied with for the life of the project. So I'm, I'm going to let those comments kind of float out there. And if there are additional follow-up questions, uh, general or pointed, uh, the team is here to help, uh, respond to those.
Well, I, I do have a follow-up, and I do not challenge your professionalism or the, the rationale that you're using, but I just want to bring common sense. We put the hotel in there, X numbers of rooms. I think it's under 100, I believe. And we have people come and hopefully it's for a successful business. Recently, when Gold's Gym reopened and before they were shut down again with a virus and this stuff here, the, the, the starts and stops, the hiccups, the parking lot was packed. There was nowhere to go. Food for Less on specific days is packed. And if we put the hotel in there and we decide that there's a mistake and we don't have enough parking, how do we address going back and adding parking if we've got agreements in place and there's no place else to put extra cars? Do we, do we then go on a permit parking to go to Gold's Gym or the, the, uh, Food for Less or the hotel? How does that work?
Councilmember, um, we have, um, potentially, we're getting out of a script here, so.
I don't think so, Mayor. I'm asking questions specifically about this and I'm being asked to vote yes or no.
I'll let the seat attorney answer that question.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, Councilmember Parello. So this is a public hearing and if you had clarifying questions for staff, that's one thing, but it sounds like we're getting into deliberations. Uh, you're going through your thought processes on how you want to rule on the appeal rather than asking for clarifying questions. So the order of the script is that we get the clarifying questions out of the way. Then the public hearing can be opened. Any presentations that need to be made can be made, and then you can move on to your deliberations.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Pearson. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any additional questions from councilmembers? If not, then we, we're, our next item is, uh, now we're going to open the public, our testimony portion to the public in the public hearing. And Madam Clerk, do we have any speakers for this item?
Yes, we do, Mayor. We have three.
Three speakers. Okay, so those three speakers, uh, we have are, um, Alex Correo, followed by Armando Delgado and Joe Duran, John Duran, excuse me. Alex Correo.
Mayor, at this time, Mr. Correo is not available. However, we do have Armando Delgado and John Duran on the line.
Okay.
Mr. Delgado?
Yes, I am here. I am now on the phone, not on Zoom. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir. You have three minutes to speak. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, councilmembers, staff and fellow residents. It has come to our attention that the developer has requested a special use permit for the construction of a new true hotel in Oxnard. These special uses usually do not conform to traditional use groupings, and because of their unique characteristics and nature of operation, require specific safeguards or design constraint to be in place prior to their development. So here we go. A special use shall be permitted only when adequate mitigation measures have been provided to eliminate or reduce any potential negative impacts. In addition, special use permits are granted for such time and upon such conditions are as deemed necessary to preserve the integrity and the character of the zoning district, utility and value of adjacent property, and the general welfare of the neighborhood and public. Yes, the general welfare of the neighborhood and the public. This is language, this language was pulled directly from Oxnard City Code, Chapter 16, Article 7, Division 3, Section 1531, Line A. No proposed special use permit shall be granted if the approval body finds such use will adversely affect or be materially detrimental to such adjacent uses, buildings or structures, or to the public health, safety or general welfare. And again, I state adversely affects the public, the public health, safety and general welfare. I heard some comments. I, I heard that the public, uh, the parking areas were full of cars when the gym was open, that there may be, uh, enough spots that overflowed, a- and the Food for Less was a little overflowing. But you got to keep in mind, the gym is necessary for physical activity and for mental health. And the food store is for necessity. So Mayor and councilmembers, we'd like to tell that you know also that we're tired of living in poverty. We're sick of being last in line to have a good job, a good construction job. How many times have we seen developers come here, push their weight around and build as they please? They're here to build the hotel in the middle of the Espinaw. Are you serious? Who would have ever thought that our community leaders would have to spend their Tuesday evening and be asked to roll over on the constituents just to put a hotel in the middle of a shopping center? Even worse, you're asked to allow it to be in between a Food for Less and a Gold's Gym. Weren't there some other hotel proposals?
Thirty seconds.
Somewhere else that made sense and not approved? This is a bigger one. There's a bigger one literally a few hundred yards just away from, in, uh, across Vineyard. If people really want to stay in the vicinity. That being said, we ask that you think of the true cost to you, to the community and to the area standards for carpenters and their families. We urge you to support the appeal to the Planning Commission's approval of the project, because it's not consistent with the 2012 redevelopment project approvals for the shopping center that approved the shopping center for the retail and service uses only.
Thank you, Armando. Our next speaker is, uh, John Duran.
Mr. John Duran? Mr. Duran, you may unmute by pressing star six.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, Mr. Duran. Thank you. You have three minutes to speak.
All right. Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. Uh, my name is Jonathan Duran. I'm a representative of the Southwest Regional Council of Carpenters, longtime resident of Ventura County, um, and a third-generation union carpenter. For me, um, I'm seeing this project come forward and trying to get this special permit. It, like I said, it's, uh, my, from the previous speaker from Armando. On our end is what we see out there in the industry is contractors that come from outside the area. They bring their workforce, they cheat the system, and they leave. There have been multiple projects in Ventura County and multiple projects in Oxnard City that we've seen these scrupulous contractors come in and basically ransack through our, the city and take their money and leave. All we're asking for is with these projects is to be able to sit at the table, be a part of these projects, and be able to have skin in the game. These projects will be a lot better for the community if local hire, local trade men and local carpenters get to work in these projects. Again, we ask you to, uh, hold up on the appeal and.
Okay. Okay. Oh, the, the appellant? Does the appellant have any questions, concerns on this item? Mr. Bono?
Willie Bono's. You may unmute by pressing star six. Mr. Willie Bono's?
Good evening, Mayor and City Councilmembers.
Good evening, sir. Thank you. You have three minutes to speak.
Thank you. We're in the process of working with Marcus Frisco and Kroger or Food for Less. And trying to find some things that would benefit the business for Gold's Gym. While trying to work through. trying to work through the parking challenges. Uh, when we built our Gold's Gyms, there was not a lot of exceptions made from planning at all. We're finding that those same consistencies did not exist here with the True Hotel, which is beneficial for them and good for them. But our objection has been that we have concerns for the parking. We're attempting to work through those. We do have a request of items that will most likely take approval from city planning. And we hope that when those items are presented, that together we can work through them in order to get to a common agreement. That's really all I have to say. We've been concerned. We felt that we were notified late in the game. As we were not notified and per our current lease, we have self rights, self-help rights that will allow us to enforce the CCNRs, which I know have nothing to do uh, with what you're speaking about here. But we want to make it clear again that the CCNRs disallow a hotel in this project. So we wanted to make that public statement. We wanted to make you aware. But we are working in good faith together to see if there's an outcome uh, that would work for all of us involved and including the city. Thank you very much for your time tonight.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Mayor, we also have another, uh, appellant. Uh, Glenn Sherman.
Okay, Glenn. Three minutes.
Mr. Glenn Sherman.
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Uh, very good.
You have three minutes to speak.
All right. Am I getting a reverberation or is it just in my ears?
It's just on your end. We can hear you clearly. Thank you.
Okay, then, um, I, I, yes, I am counsel for the Golds. And what I wanted to do is clarify just a couple of things. One is, is that the, the, uh, CCNRs or the reciprocal parking that was discussed earlier, that was a reference that it was already in existence as a condition of approval. Well, I, I, I would respectfully argue that the, um, that it doesn't exist as a condition of approval that's been satisfied because of the hotel being a prohibition on the CCNR. So I don't know that there is reciprocal parking that would be available for the hotel actually. And I wanted to just reiterate that, yes, there, there aren't agreements in place now, but we do wish to work in good faith and we do want to try and see if there's a solution for the, uh, the parking constraints that we are concerned with. So, uh, just wanted to, uh, reiterate these couple of points and to recognize that, if the city does, uh, elect to approve of the hotel, that we would suggest that as a, uh, clarifying condition of approval, that there be an amendment to the CCNRs to allow the hotel use as a condition to that approval. Not just that there's a parking, uh, agreement. Because of course, there's a big difference between what theoretically may be, uh, ultimately approved in a parking study versus what is actually in place once you've got, uh, the, uh, customers in the, uh, grocer as well as the hotel, uh, as well as the gym. All three would wind up being, um, you know, challenging without adjustments in our mind. That's all I have to report and appreciate the time and effort that all of you have in, in, in focusing on this.
Thank you, Mr. Sherman. Any additional speakers?
I believe we may have one more.
One more? Okay.
Hello, may I ask who's on hold to speak? Would you please identify yourself? They're no longer on the line.
Okay. Oops, there we go.
Sir, my apologies. It's not yet your time to speak yet. We can move forward, Mayor.
Okay, well, thank you so much.
Excuse me, Marcus, did you want to speak at all on this item?
Um, yes, actually I did want to say a couple of words. Um, and hopefully the, uh, carpenters' union is still listening. Um, but we do have several bids in, uh, and they are from local contractors and, uh, who would be utilizing, uh, the local, uh, tradesmen uh, in the Oxnard and Ventura area. He probably is not aware because he's just hasn't, you know, reached out to us. Um, second of all, um, I do want to thank all the members of the council as well as the planning department uh, for all of their hard work on this, uh, item and, um, there you have it.
Thank you.
Mr. Frisco, can you please identify who you represent, please?
Okay, I am the actual developer. Uh, I am the president and CEO of Maticus Hospitality Group. I am the actual Hilton franchisor. Uh, and, uh, or franchisee, actually. And, um, so it's, that's, that's me.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Any additional speakers, Madam Clerk?
Not at this time, Mayor.
Okay, if not, I will close a public hearing. And councilmembers, any additional information or questions at this time? Okay, if not, I'm going to entertain a motion and I'm going to read the, uh, Turan, I'm sorry. Councilmember Turan and then followed by Madrigal.
Thank you very much, Mayor. I want to thank, uh, city staff for putting this all together and, um, thank the Planning Commission for reviewing it, sending it forward. And, um, thank the applicant as well as the appellants for, uh, going through this process with our city. I have a couple of questions that I want to, um, just throw out there. I was listening intently after going over the appeal and the staff responses. And, um, a few things were stated, uh, by the appellant. One is around inconsistencies that were seemingly allowed for the applicant but were not allowed for the gym. And I'm just curious about, uh, how those are, uh, what staff's take is on that and if they have a response. I also, um, wanted to ask about Mr. Sherman's recommendation, uh, if the plan were to move forward or if the appeal was denied. Uh, what, um, that would look like? If that, is that, are we even allowed to do that after the, um, after the appeal is denied if this were to, uh, when this goes to a vote? And then, um, if the appeal were upheld tonight, uh, what would happen next to the project? Uh, is it starting from ground zero? Do they go back and, uh, have to make adjustments and return to the Planning Commission? Uh, what, what would that look like for the project if the appeal were to be upheld? And those are my three questions that I have one comment after the responses. Thank you.
Can you take the lead in responding, please?
Yes, absolutely. First, I think it's important to indicate for the record that Gold's Gym has appealed based on alleged violations of the CCNRs, which are the covenants, conditions and restrictions. The city does not enforce CCNRs and what, uh, the attorney for Gold's Gym proposed that the city force an amendment to the CCRs is something that the city cannot legally do. CCNRs are a private agreement between the parties. Uh, and that's not something that we're a party to. The city enforces its general plan and zoning regulations. Based on the existing zoning for this property, hotel isn't allowed commercial use and the project is in compliance with the city's general plan and zoning regulations. I also think it's important to state for the record that while there will be a need for the reciprocal agreement with an adjoining property owner, the, the property that is owned by the developer for this Hilton project has enough spaces available for parking. In fact, based on the traffic study, it's Gold's Gym that is generating too much parking um, and is actually taking other people's parking. So this project in and of itself can provide on its own property the necessary spaces for, for the employees and for the anticipated number of residents that will be on the, on, at the hotel on a given night. And Councilmember Turan, to answer your question regarding what happens to the project if the appeal is, is granted, in other words, if the Planning Commission's decision is overturned, that project would come back to go back to square one. And, uh, it would, it would delay this project by, uh, likely a one to two year period. So it could actually, uh, kill this project if the, the council elected, uh, not, excuse me, the council elected to uphold, um, this, this, the appellant's request to overturn the project.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And, um, I have to say that, uh, hearing the speakers, but also looking at the, um, projects as it went to the Planning Commission and looking at the appeal, I appreciate your input on that, um, Mr. Rozelle. And I have to say, as someone who prior to the pandemic traveled fairly frequently across the state to, for work, I have stayed in a number of, um, hotels and sites that have shared parking on fairly, um, tight parking space allotments. And it can sometimes be a battle. And, um, I have to say that, uh, when you're making sure double and triple checking, I am parked in the right place, right? I don't want to get a citation tonight. I want to come out and make sure my car is still there. I absolutely empathize with anyone who's been in that position, but also, uh, what our existing business owners, um, and our businesses at Food for Less and Gold's Gym are worried about. And so, uh, the thing is with that, that one thing that I really hope can, uh, that was stated here tonight by the applicant, Mr. Frisco, I, um, heard him state that there are bids in from local, uh, uh, developers or lo- local agi- uh, companies who could use local labor. To be completely frank, uh, that's not a commitment in my mind. Um, that's saying that's something that could happen. It certainly could happen, but it could also not happen. And I have little authority or ability to say you have to use local labor, but I would like to state for the record that in the city of Oxnard, in our community, if someone is applying to be part of this community now, part of the business community, I certainly hope that that is a, if it's not in writing, which it hopefully would be, but if it's not in writing, that they hear me saying now that that is a, um, strong expectation for me as a community leader that that be considered. Um, that being said, Mr. Rozelle, one last question. What we're voting on tonight is the, um, upholding or the denial of the appeal and it's based on what the appeal is asking. Is that correct?
That is correct. It is, it is based on the appeal that was filed by Gold's Gym. They gave three specific grounds for their appeal. And as I indicated before, um, it is the staff's belief and the city attorney's office belief that Gold's Gym has not stated proper grounds to overturn the Planning Commission's, uh, decision.
Thank you for that. And for that reason, um, I've brought up my concerns about the project. I hope that they can be addressed and I hope that the project will be successful moving forward. But based on the grounds for the appeal, if that's what we're voting on tonight, I, um, I cannot, uh, support the appeal and I I thank Gold's Gym for taking the effort to go into that and I, um, wish them success as we come out of the pandemic, but I hope that if, as we move forward with this, that something can be figured out for the benefit of the community. Thank you for my, my time.
Thank you, Councilmember and Councilmember, uh, Madrigal, followed by Councilman Parello. Madrigal.
Let's see. Okay. Uh, thank you. Uh, thank you, um, to both, uh, the developer and to, um, Gold's Gym uh, for taking time out of your, uh, Tuesday, uh, to be here. I, uh, quite honest, um, I don't go to, uh, Food for Less. Uh, but from years of being here, I do know that if I'm not mistaken, uh, Food for Less is probably the busiest grocery store in the city. And, um, I know it's busy, uh, whenever I do go to the Esplanade Shopping Center. I do have Gold's, uh, Gym membership. I haven't been there since, uh, February of 2020. Uh, so now I kind of regret getting that membership since I paid the two years in advance, but that's a different story. Uh, so being there, I do know that, um, a lot of people, especially right now, uh, are adamant about going to the gym. Ever since the news came that Gold was going to be built here in Oxnard, you know, you had a mass, mass exodus from uh, 24 Hour Fitness at the collection. Um, so I do know that there is, um, a lot of people that go to Gold's Gym. A couple of things, um, you know, I think a hotel there would be great. Um, I actually, you know, pretty much had my mind made up, uh, before, um, got here, you know, it was probably about 70, 30. Uh, but something that, uh, Councilmember Parello said, uh, really swayed, uh, me in um, the opposite, uh, direction. The concept of parking and even going through this again, that 30% was heavily based on parking, um, why the change? And why for, why would we, um, change our minds halfway through for the hotel and not for other quote unquote, local businesses who I've been either through Zoom or actually even in person when we were at the council chambers, uh, who the city adamantly denied because of inadequate parking. And realistically, the, you know, parking situation would never be as drastic as what the city was asking for. So, you know, um, with all respect to staff, you know, I didn't feel that they answered Councilmember Parello's question. And, um, so, um, I would have to go with the appeal.
Thank you, Councilmember Parello, followed by Mayor Pro Tim McDonald.
Thank you. I, I, I want to thank everyone that's, that's spoken on this, um, and I, most importantly, most importantly, I want to thank City Attorney Ken Rozelle. I put high regard and do whatever comes out of Mr. Ken Rozelle. And with respect to this, as he explained, CCNRs, we can't enforce them. And if, if I'm, if I am incorrect, Mr. Rozelle, please correct me. Cut it, cut in whatever or speak after I'm, I'm done. And I did not realize that this was something that we could not enforce. I didn't catch the finer, the finer marks on this. But I did give examples of where there have been problems with development and accommodations made because of lack of parking. I look at this and I think to myself, we may not be able to enforce the CCNRs. And if the project goes through and the parking becomes an issue, it's going to be back in the city of Oxnard's lap. And people are going to be bringing examples of this being approved similar to the examples I gave for, of items that were approved in the past, which are currently problems. I, I'm going to have to go along with this appeal. I, there's got to be something. I do not want to stop a project. I don't want to belittle the individuals putting money in this project. Mr. Marcus, I have all the respect in the world for businessmen trying to, uh, Mr. Marcus Frisco. All the respect for a businessman trying to do something, but uh, there are plenty of examples in the city where you look at parking and you look at the issues that are involved. And granted, there's going to be driverless cars and electric cars and, and all the other things coming in, but right now, today, and I believe in the next four to five years, this will be a problem. And I, I cannot support, uh, the council's, I mean, the Planning Commission's decision and I will support the appeal. And Mr. Rozelle, if I've been wrong in, in my assumptions, not that I'm challenging you, but if I've misstated something, please correct me. Because your wisdom is not. Because your wisdom is not heard enough in this city. Not enough people listen to the planning commissions, and you don't get an opportunity to speak enough at council meetings. Those are my comments, Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, Mayor Protem, and I'm not sure if Mr. Rozell wants to.
Uh, you know, Mr. Mayor, I um I've read through a bunch of information and, and I would agree with Mr. Rozell. We don't enforce CCNRs. That's a civil matter. Um and the city does not have an enforcement authority there. So that, I took that off the table right away as as an issue for consideration. But in listening to staff's presentation, the brief presentation tonight, there was a comment in, in regards to one of Councilmember Parello's questions about, well, we've, we've built in an ability for um a staff member to deal with that issue if it comes forward. I think it had to do with parking or, or some other agreement. And I'm I, I have to be honest, we, we have very good staff. We've done a very good job of hiring good staff within the last couple of years. I have great respect for them, but sometimes staff changes. And you know, we're, we're gonna be and I don't even know who the particular staff person would be that would make a change, but we're taking a decision that has gone through planning commission, which is a body of several people, uh council, which is a body of several people. And then throwing it all in the lap of an individual, and not that I don't trust the individual or have complete faith in the individual. I, I think it takes away something from the process. I'm a little worried about you know, maybe the individual that, that would make this decision now would make the perfect decision I would agree with, but that might change, would staff changes. So I have some pause over that type of approach. I, I wasn't sure which way I was gonna go on this. I was, I was actually leaning towards supporting it because um I think we need the jobs, we need something to boost the economy, but I am, I am really concerned about the parking in this area. And I, and I go through the area quite often. Parking in the parking lot is um, hey, I'm Mr. Colwitz, and I'll get to you just a second there. Parking is, is um, you know, it's at a premium there, and I want to make sure that we've fully vetted this. So at this point, I, I'm probably going to be in support of the appeal, but um and Mayor, I think Mr. Colwitz wanted to make a couple of responses.
Okay, go ahead. And then I have the city manager would like to share some.
Uh Mayor Zeragoza and members of the council, thank you. Just to share some quick facts with you. Um in our presentation and in our staff report, we included a table that talked about required parking out on this particular site. So I just wanted to highlight that for all of us, so we know what numbers we're talking about. So the True Hilton Hotel that's being proposed for you today, if it was on its own independent parcel, it's an eighty-eight room hotel that would simply require eighty-eight ho- uh parking spaces. And the project that's been designed today provides eighty-eight parking spaces. So that's a way of saying that the hotel essentially is whole, if you will. The Food for Less Shopping Center as a whole um has six hundred and thirty-two parking spaces out there today, including the eighty-eight that this site will, will bring with it. If we looked at a strict calculation of the different uses within the shopping center, added them up, um we would find that um a total of seven hundred and ninety-two spaces in total are needed. Um and when we looked at the peak parking uh demand for the entirety of the shopping center, five hundred and seventy-two is what's required. That's um so as we look at the difference between um the five seventy-two that are being experienced in peak parking and six hundred and thirty-two parking spaces are being provided, we find that the shopping center as a whole does provide uh ample parking. For, for a quick comparison, though, I also wanted to not only talk about the True Hilton parking. Um so the eighty-eight parking spaces is what's required for them, and that's what's being provided. But I wanted to break it down for the other components in the uh shopping center as well. And I'm happy to go over these numbers again if need be. So the Food for Less Shopping Center, um it's a roughly eighty-five thousand square foot building, and it uh requires a total of three hundred and thirty-seven parking spaces. Food for Less only provides a hundred and twenty-four as a whole. The retail components um are approximately thirty-four thousand par- uh square feet altogether, uh which would be required to provide a hundred and thirty-seven parking spaces. And they provide a hundred and thirty-seven parking spaces. So like Hilton, the retail component is a wash. The Health and Fitness Club uh is uh supposed to provide uh two hundred and thirty parking spaces. Um and per the peak parking demand study, two hundred and ninety-seven parking spaces are required. So that one, uh what the parking study is showing is two hundred and thirty are is what's required, but they're demanding two hundred and ninety-seven spaces. So essentially, they're eating into sixty-seven parking spaces above and beyond uh what they've provided on, on the project site. So I, I'm happy to go back into those numbers um if, if there are additional questions. Uh but the Cliff Notes version of that, that we would uh suggest is the Hilton Hotel that's being proposed today is meeting the required parking demands. The shopping center as a whole has uh an excess parking, uh number of parking spaces between what's provided and what's um identified in the peak parking study. But the Gold's Gym parkings, uh the Gold's Gym use, we actually find exceeds the amount of parking spaces that would otherwise be required out in the shopping center.
Thank you, uh Mr. City Manager.
Yes, I would just like to ask staff, whether it's Mr. Colwitz or Mr. Rozell, to address the question raised by a couple of council members about uh a decision, a change of mind or a change in the decision midstream. I just want to get that addressed directly, please.
Yes, I'm happy to address it first. And Scott, if you can jump in afterwards as well. I have been involved with this process from the beginning, and there has not been a change uh in the process. We, we have done the studies, we've done the analysis, we reviewed the documentation that has been submitted uh by the applicant. And as Mr. Colwitz discussed, uh this project provides the number of spaces that they're required to under our code, and they provide it on the property that they have bought. So in essence, this is a shopping center where, you know, there's, you, you are allowed to park um on lots that, that are not owned by the, the operator that you're going to visit their particular facility. But in, in this case, the Hilton property uh would provide on property they own the full eighty-eight parking spaces that our code requires. So they will be in compliance uh with our code requirements if, if they are approved pursuant to the special use permit. So we disagree with comments made by uh the Gold's Gym representatives, by the, by the Carpenters Union and by the attorney for Gold's Gym that this project does not meet the requirements of, of the city's regulations.
Thank you. Uh any other comments?
The, the, all the other nuance that I would uh add to that, the special use permit that is being requested is uh is a tool that this project is using to help justify the, the parking requirements that we talked about. And I bring that up in the context of the Gold's Gym project that was processed with a permit called the minor modification, which uh in, in doesn't rise to the level of a planning commission review. So in terms of different hearing paths that were alleged by applicants and allowance of different standards to be met or not met, um the special use permit path, which this project went through, allows that the minor modification path that Gold's Gym processed uh does not allow them to go down that path.
Oh, thank you. Okay, Councilman Parello, followed by Turan.
Yes, uh Mr. Colwitz or Mr. Rozell, can you please address this? On the development, uh the condition one fifty-three, prior to the issuance of a site improvement permit, developers shall provide evidence of the reclamation of a reciprocal access and parking agreement with the adjacent property owners. From what I've understood you recently just say, they are providing one hundred percent of all the reparking that they need. Why is this item even then required? I mean, it sounds, it sounds to me that I'm very lucky that I started asking questions here, because it sounds like the applicant, uh the uh, what the hell, the hotel is a hundred percent. And Gold's Gym is, is uh way beyond what they're supposed to. But now we're gonna make the applicant, the, not the appellate, the hu- hotel, provide you with step one fifty-three? When you're already telling me that they have eighty-three sites already, and they were a hundred percent within the group, but the other guys are supposed to um provide two thirty, but they're taking two ninety-seven?
I'd be happy to, I'd be happy to answer that, uh Councilmember Parello, members of, of the council. It is standard for shopping centers for there to be reciprocal agreements, because a shopping center really works where you have multiple property owners, wh- where the different uh uses within that site have the ability to park in different places. So in essence, it's, it's not like you have one little property by itself where you have to go into a parking lot and can only park on their property. It works for the, the benefit of the entire shopping center where there's those reciprocal agreements for maintenance of the, the parking lot uh for access between the drive aisles, et cetera. So this is something which is a standard condition we would impose on all properties within a, a shopping center. So this is not, they're not being treated differently, but for the shopping center to work, they need to have that reciprocal agreement.
So, so if I can follow up to that, Mr. Rozell. In other words, the example that Councilmember Turan gave, that if he went to a, a facility, he had to make sure he knew where his car was parked so it wouldn't be towed, or it would be there in the morning when he got out. This is not going to be a problem here?
This should not now. You know, there are going to be things like, you know, drop off zones of, if, when you sit at a hotel, sometimes you have kind of temporary parking spaces where you can park your car while you're unloading your luggage and you need to move to another place. So I fully expect, because this is a, you know, a, would be a nice hotel, that they would have those kind of places to ensure that their guests can check in and that members of the Gold's Gym uh would not be parking in those spaces. So the, the hotel visitors would have that ability to, to park there. But generally, there's going to be the reciprocal you know, agreement, so that there can be parking, you know, as is available.
Okay, I, I appreciate that. My fellow councilmen's, I gotta tell you, this has been a change, uh a light bulb going off here. Um I do perceive that uh if all these entities are successful, there will be an argument over who's parking where. But from what I'm understanding from my staff, we don't have a dog in this fight because we don't control, because they have CCNRs and whatever agreements. The hotel is in compliance. Um the food for less, my understanding is they provide a little bit less than what was required, and Gold is taking more than what was required. And if staff can answer me that, I, I'm gonna last question. I'd have to change my, my vote on this one. Can you answer that question?
And, and Councilmember Parello, I'm, I'm sorry, the, the, the question was.
My question is this. My question is this. The only people, if this thing, if this thing were in place right now, the only people that are within their rights is the hotel, because he's providing eighty-eight, he's supposed to, he's providing eighty-eight, and he's gonna get eighty-eight. The gym is supposed to provide by, through the numbers, two thirty, but he's taken two ninety-seven? And Food for Less is supposed to provide uh and I, I missed that number, but it, it, Food for Less is providing a little bit less than what they were required. So the only one that's in compliance is the hotel, which is not built yet?
Well, to, to make it clear, there is a, the whole concept of shared parking is that you give a little, you take a little, and the, the idea for a shopping center that you're gonna have some businesses that have peaks at some hours and some in other hours. But to answer your specific question, based on the, the, the parking study peak demand, the True Hotel is the only one that, that would meet their required number of parking spaces that meets their peak parking demand. So they would, the one in compliance, the others would not be in compliance, even though taken combined, there would still be enough parking spaces based on that, that traffic study.
And there's a reciprocal concern that you, you mentioned, that they, they share with the shopping centers.
And, and Mayor, the, the other thing, maybe you can answer this, Mayor, that if this is approved, and what we've heard tonight, we will not be hearing from this again if there's an argument about parking.
I'm not sharing that. I'm sure you, you can vote accordingly. I'm not sharing that at all.
No, I'm not telling you. I'm not asking you to vote. I'm just, I'm just bringing it up. If this, my concern is that we're gonna have this dropped in our lap, and I can give a sighting in, in the South Winds neighborhood, two commercial lots on Weneme Road, where there's a big fight over who gets to park in what lot. And um Mr. McDonald has, has had to fight this one for a lot of years. I don't want this to happen here. That's why I brought these concerns up.
Yes, it's a good point, but what I'm sharing that Mr. uh Ken Rozell said, that normally there's a reciprocal between shopping centers and, and other issues. I'm not saying that they're right, wrong, or indifferent, but yes, uh that hotel that was gonna meet the parking requirements.
Okay, so then, Mr. Rozell or Mr. Colwitz, uh Mr. Rozell or Colwitz, if this does become a parking issue, is there an expectation that it's gonna be back here at city council to, to hassle it out?
Um, Councilmember Parello, while we cannot, you know, predict, you know, what process would occur, there are, there are steps that first would need to be addressed between the different property owners within the shopping center. There are CCNRs, which we do not force, enforce, excuse me, lay out particular methods in which they can address any parking issues which might arise. So we would look to them first to deal with this on a private level. It would be unlikely, but you know, it could be possible that this could come to a, a, a level for a, a modification uh for any one of the permits which have been issued for this property. But that is, that is very unlikely to occur, e- especially based on the conditions that staff uh has, has proposed that lay out the way in which the hotel will address um the, the drop off and, and parking for its particular hotel. So we believe the conditions provide the appropriate protections, but you know, I can't promise you it will never come before the, the council at some point.
I, I, thank you very much. I, I, I have to withdraw my support of the appeal. I have, I appreciate Mr. Rozell's responses. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh Councilmember Turan.
Thank you very much. Um and thank you, Mr. Colwitz, for bringing up the um table that is located in the staff report. And for anyone who has a staff report open, uh the large PDF, it's page six hundred and forty-four. Uh I was following along with that and looking at uh what you had mentioned there as far as uh the required number of spaces, and then the parking studies reveal of what peak demand required for spacing requirements. And um I, I see what was mentioned there. And the total project, I see uh all of the uh businesses in question here during peak demand would require five hundred and seventy-two spaces. And the proposed has six hundred and thirty-two spaces uh would be available, which I think is a nice cushion. If, you know, I would like to just confirm that that's the case. But the second thing that comes to mind in looking at this table, and we're talking about the hotel requiring eighty-eight spaces um and getting eighty-eight spaces, or using eighty-eight spaces, I should say. Um I just have a question that it says eighty-eight rooms equals eighty-eight spaces. Okay, that makes sense. One car per room. All right. Accounted for something that Mr. Rozell had brought up. Well, sometimes hotels have maybe two to four spaces that are reserved for, this is fifteen minute parking while you check in. Does that now mean there's eighty-four spaces available for rooms? Because now four spaces are reserved for temporary parking? And what about the front desk staff or the cleaning staff or the maintenance staff? Well, you know, where, where do they park? The eighty-eight spaces, I'm guessing when we talk about uh the shared parking agreement, staff who are there every day, I guess, would probably spill over to the um other spaces. Or of their eighty-eight, they reserve, hey, this is staff parking. We now have eight spaces that we've taken away from because we need space for our staff every single day. So now there's eighty spaces minus the four, which now gives us seventy-six spaces. And so I'm just wanting to get some confirmation on that. Um was that taken into account for peak demand uh for parking? And um I know I already stated there's a large cushion there, but can you address that cushion of six thirty-two required and five, or I'm sorry, five seventy-two required, but six thirty-two being available? Is that accurate?
If I could, I'll, I'll start the discussion. And Scott, if you can jump in as well. Councilmember Turan and members of the council, yes, you are reading the, the table one uh entitled Parking Compliance correctly. Under the peak um uh the parking study peak demand, there's a demand for five hundred and seventy-two spaces. And there's a proposed six hundred and thirty-two spaces provided on site. As far as the number of um spaces that are required for the hotel, it is eighty-eight spaces for eighty-eight rooms. The expectation is that uh it's very rare for hotels to have a hundred percent occupancy. So it's, it's, it's only those very unusual occasions where every room So it's 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 only those very unusual occasions where every room is filled. So it's expected that there's not going to be, you know, eighty-eight cars for the eighty-eight people in the eighty-eight rooms, but it'll be something less than that. Um, you also have the ability to require that the employees of the uh hotel don't park in the prime spaces in front of the hotel, but they park in the back. And that would open up those spaces to to ensure that the prime spaces are available for the the visitors to the hotel for, you know, the the people going to Gold Gym, et cetera. So I think you have to look at this as an average, that yes, there are those those days um that some big event, um, every parking space is gonna be filled, but those are definitely not what is expected, you know, on a on a regular peak parking demand.
And if I could add slightly to that, I I agree fully with what Ken just shared with all of you. In in terms of not hitting maximum occupancy, but that condition that we had which requires a transportation demand management program um could require things such as uh uh you know, a valet program or some other accommodation, if you will, if we determine that there indeed is a parking issue that's that's uh created. So there is an intentional forethought um and some level of flexibility and hammer, if you will, for the city to step in to make sure that the facility is operating in a manner which we anticipated well.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you for that. And um, I I appreciate that. That helped a lot, Mr. Colwitz. Um, I did see the statement about valet there, but um I do see it can be something that could be um used to mitigate parking issues if they were to arise. So thank you for that. And I, um, last thing I'll say, Mr. Mayor. And thank you both of Mr. Colwitz and Mr. Rozell. I'm not saying this to be cheeky, but I would certainly hope that every hotel we have in our city is at a hundred percent occupancy. You know, any chance we get, um, I would love for uh this to be a destination city where we are vying, people are vying to come here and visit and stay. But we need to have uh spaces for them to park and for there not to be an unpleasant experience for them for that as well. So thank you again for um your uh help on that. And thank you for the time, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, council members. At this point, I'd like to ask for a motion, but I'm gonna read the the recommendations to the city council. Again, and number one is to hold a public hearing, which we're doing right now. Number two, approve an addendum number one to final mitigate mitigate negative, mitigate negative declaration. Number twelve dash zero one. And also three, to adopt the resolution twenty twenty-one XX, denying the appeal and upholding the planning commission's approval of a planning zone permit. Number nineteen dash five zero zero dash oh three, special use permit, subject to certain findings and conditions. Because the record shows that there is evidence of necessary to make all the findings required by the city code section one six dash five three one in order to grant the special use permit. So do we have a motion from the council members at this time? Uh, on those three items.
On move approval.
And to confirm, Mayor, um, what we're um making a motion on what we're moving here is to, as you had mentioned, uh adopt a resolution denying the appeal.
Yes.
And everything that follows that on the staff report, correct?
Ye- yes, sir. That's item number three. Yes, yes. So who was it first?
Me, VNA.
It was uh Councilmember Lopez, and I will second it.
Second by Turan. Roll call.
Mayor Saragosa.
Yes.
Mayor Puchan McDonald.
I'm now reminded why I never wanted to be on planning commission and I have a splitting headache that I didn't have before this discussion. But I will vote in favor of the motion.
Councilmember Parello.
Yes.
Councilmember Lopez.
Yes.
Councilmember Madrigal.
No.
Councilmember Basua.
Yes.
Councilmember Turan.
Yes.
Thank you. This motion passes six to one.
Thank you. Our next item is uh Fire Department.
Uh, members of the city council, once again, and uh thank you, Jesus. You guys have a good evening.
Thank you. Good evening. Our next item is uh, as the Fire Department subjects agreement A eighty-three seventeen with fault Mobile Health Corporation fault for three years with an option to renew for additional two years not to exceed seven million one hundred and forty-three thousand six hundred and twenty-one. Year one is six million eight hundred and sixty-two and thirty and three hundred and twenty-one. Year two is six million five hundred and fourteen seven hundred and twenty-seven. The third year, six million six hundred and eighty-three and thirteen and a hundred and thirty-one. The fourth year is six million eight hundred and twenty-six nine nine nine. And the five year for ambulance transport services and a purchase order with Striker Medical. And this is again um to authorize the city council with a with a uh recommendation, one, two, three uh as as mentioned. And we have, and this is again uh under measure M, a pre-recorded item, and we have Chief uh uh Hamilton to answer any questions as needed. And and we have uh two public speakers on this item. And that's gonna be um Douglas Partello, followed by Pat Brown. Douglas Partello, three minutes.
Mr. Partello.
Hello?
Yes, Mr. Partello, you have three minutes to speak.
Uh, good evening, everyone. The city presses forward with a twenty million dollar contract with Falk Ambulance Service. Almost five hundred thousand for equipment and a billing contract with Siren, a Trident. When the court battle over their ability to bill it alone is not yet resolved. So the city is rolling the dice that they will get a favorable ruling rather than wait until after April thirtieth hearing. A twenty-one million dollar gamble with taxpayers' money when they do not have the money to even support this. By Chief Hamilton's own admission, the city will be in the red for two million or more for the first couple of years. If the city wins, they will still have the issue of paying for new ambulances, equipment, training, increased costs of outsourcing the billing and management of this service. Let's remember, the ultimate goal of Oxnard Fire is to have Oxnard paramedic firefighter staff in service. Falk is a temporary stopgap until Oxnard Fire gets up and running. How will they do this more cost-effective than Gold Coast with pensions and benefits is unfathomable. This is a move to take the focus off unfunded pensions. They claim two million dollars in added revenue after the cost when a city cannot make a profit on service. County will continue to handle dispatch to Gold Coast. The city has two options, stop or Oxnard PD dispatch to Oxnard Fire. How is that gonna work? Assuming they win in court, which is a dubious hope. Chief Hamilton claimed poor response times, but the facts do not support that assertion. He stated ninety-one point five compliance with exemptions for Gold Coast. The latest data for Gold Coast is ninety-three point eight seven percent. Oxnard has the best response times in the county and possibly the whole state. When factoring response times, he failed to mention call density, which is a very important factor. What criteria did he use to come up with his map? Gold Coast has never been non-compliant. When did Chief Hamilton reach out to VCE EMS or Gold Coast to address their concerns? The county system sends the closest ambulance regardless of which company under mutual aid agreements. How will that work when Oxnard is on its own? This is a solution seeking a problem. Just more losing litigation at taxpayer expense for an ill-conceived and ill-fated gamble. I urge you to vote no on this proposal or at least postpone it until the court battle is done. The next litigation may be with Falk Ambulance Service. They may walk away with a hundred and fifty K startup cost, but they also invest in this gamble and may have more costs on that investment. Oxnard better plan instead on how to pay back the thirty-four million in utility funds to the utility funds and the two million to the utility ratepayers that keep, but they keep rolling the dice with partial and false data to justify their gambling problem. Well, now they're gambling with our lives. And you better think very carefully about this move. How better equipped is the city of Oxnard than Ventura County to give us this vital service? Thank you for your time.
Thank you. The next speaker is uh Pat Brown.
Ms. Pat Brown.
Um, am I unmuted so I can speak?
Yes, ma'am, we can hear you.
I have had some interesting uh situations happen um as a neighborhood chair uh working with this, with the fire department for emergency preparedness and that sort of thing. Um, I think they really know what they're doing. Um, and I trust that they have considered all of these comments that the fellow has made and that they feel that there is a need for what they have in mind instead of what was 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 originally expected. And I um, I I can understand the the comment, but I think probably that the fire department has has another uh idea in mind that that you have not um been um aw- aware of, at least to this point. Uh, those um firemen are very, very good at the doing the ambulance. But what if there are fires and there is an ambulance needed somewhere else at the same time? I'm not sure that we could, um, we have enough employees to uh to handle all of that all at the same time. Or a major earthquake and and you have all of these people that um are, you know, needing to be um transported to the hospital. And at the same time, uh, you you need uh to have a fireman out there taking care of fires of uh that have come up because of the earthquake um and in some, in some structures. So, you know, I think they're trying to think of how to keep ahead of the game instead of always um being behind it like a lot of other cities are. And um, so I respect their comments. They must have it all figured out. And and I I understand how some people uh can think uh very negatively about this. But I think one thing that the county would prefer is is that we just let them take care of our fire, our emergency um and 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 the people, uh, ambulances for the people that have to go to hospitals. And I'm not sure that they can do that. Because we're, we're um farther away from some of the hospitals that are. And so they would get first crack in Ventura. And um, I I feel that um there must be a need. Our city um I think is getting older. Uh, the population is living longer. And um, like myself, I'm gonna be eighty here soon. And um, I I just feel that this is, this must be needed. There's more to this than meets the eye. I have a feel. And um, so that's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat. Okay, uh, council members, any comments, any concerns? Questions of uh uh, Councilmember Turan?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, so I'm sure that uh Chief Hamilton will address the questions that were brought up by the speakers. One thing I hope to draw attention to uh for our, my council colleagues as well as members of the public is in the attachment for the uh staff report to this agenda. Uh, on page five hundred and seventy-four, there is a very helpful graphic that was included. It's titled ambulance dispatch peak hours. Site allocation, seven sites based on eighteen nineteen calls for service. So using two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen fiscal year data on calls for service and it's a great visual on what it would look like with uh seven dedicated ambulances for the city of Oxnard. And um, this is a voluminous attachment uh for for this particular item. But in if you look at nothing else, draw your attention to that and the pages proceeding and immediately following it that have to do with coverage and how that looks. So if we if we need seven ambulances to cover the city um and be there within five minutes or less um to be able to respond to an emergency, a health-related, um, sometimes life or death emergency. Uh, the sooner they get there, the better the outcomes, as Chief Hamilton has mentioned. So apparently we need seven uh, at least seven ambulances dedicated to Oxnard to provide full coverage, especially in our denser parts of our city. Um, specifically, South Oxnard. Now, imagine one of those seven goes to Malibu because there's an extra job that the company can take on to make a couple extra a thousand dollars if they transport somebody from, you know, an area hospital to somewhere out of the area. Could be Malibu, could be uh East Ventura County, could be anywhere. So now we have six covering our area when we need seven. Well, what if another one's in a call or out of service and now we have five, right? So the idea here is that um what 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 helped me a lot from the presentation, but also from having this come to the Finance and Governance Committee was about coverage and response times. We need to add a adequate coverage to have adequate response times or even better than adequate response times. And those response times, we're talking about people's lives here, people's health and wellness. And um I've I've heard a fellow council member mention this in the past, prior to my appointment about what it's like to have a um family member there when first responders arrive. And I will share, I've been in that situation. And um it's a relief to have them show up. The sooner the better. Minutes feel like hours when you're in an emergency and our residents of our city, our community, they deserve the best coverage that we can provide for them. And um, if our current involvement in the JPA has not been able to consistently demonstrate that, then I feel that's why we've had to look elsewhere to make sure that that happens. This isn't people not performing to expectations for a building project or for running a a program. These are people's lives we're talking about. And so uh I just wanted to draw attention to that and I appreciate the time for this, Mayor. Thank you.
Yeah, and council members, I'd like, uh, before we allow the council, I'd like to share six items that I've spoke to the to the chief about. The and item number one would be improving ambulance services for the residents of Oxnard. And they're they're gonna focus on nine-one-one responses, which I think is really important. The other part that I saw on improving, there's a lot of uh improving the ambulance services for Oxnard. Improving the service for the poorest neighborhoods in Oxnard, which currently have twice the likely wait for an ambulance, specifically down in South Oxnard. And also improving local control of ambulance services. My understanding right now that the city has zero ambulances and zero say-so in what happens with the contract with the county. And also the the my understanding too, that the chief mentioned to me that in twenty nineteen there was a one thousand, one thousand two hundred occasions where there was no ambulances in Oxnard. One thousand two hundred occasions. And also, you know, the uh the the other thing that I think is really important is that we have a long-term benefit for Oxnard. Seconds matter in 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 responses. And the goal that the paramedics are looking at is met going to medical scenes within five minutes, five minutes, which is ninety percent of the time with all neighborhoods within the city as opposed to to some of the wealthier neighborhoods. And reinvesting in the community is is extremely important. Another important item that the chief mentioned to me is self-sustaining ambulances. Oxnard is gonna ensure that we have excellent services for residents. And the fire chief swore the responsibility to protect our residents. And and I believe that's extremely important to me. And the firefighters will never be in an ambulance. There or increase their pensions accordingly, as a lot of people have mentioned. So an- anyway, the EMS uh cost recovery will allow for new cutting-edge technology with additional EMS resources to direct benefit the residents of Oxnard. And one of the things that I found kind of um interesting was that response time. We have actual data. Actual data, which I think is extremely important, as opposed to average data. And and that's what eliminates, there was eliminated a lot of the information that we got, so. I think it's important that we that we in the city of Oxnard actually need to experience or we need to have some transparent metrics that we do not have now. And one of the other questions that I was gonna ask um the chief was is Falk gonna be paying the same wages as the current wages they're they're getting now? to be paying the same wages as the current wages they're, they're getting now, number one? And number two, I'd like to see local hires from, from the FALC, um, ambulance services. Are, are we going to get the same, are they going to be paying the same pay, uh, chief as the current, uh, operators are doing so? And also are they going to provide local hires? Thank you for that.
Mayor, thank you. I, uh, I appreciate the time to be able to speak to everyone this evening. Um, and, and before I answer your question, I will, um, uh, I will let you know that Scott Clough from AP Trident, uh, is on the line to answer any of the more technical questions that you might have, um, as well as representatives of FALC ambulance as well, um, if you have any questions. Um, specifically to answer your, your question though, Mayor, um, one of the things that we built into the contract with FALC, uh, was Oxnard's living wage ordinance. Um, that's going to mean, um, that the current, uh, the current provider, um, has a starting salary of, of $13.50 an hour. Um, we are setting a minimum, um, salary of $16.30 an hour. So an increase of nearly $3 an hour in, in salary to, to the employees. Um, additionally, uh, they, they are working to hire, uh, local EMTs and paramedics, um, from, from this area. They have been given, um, uh, the other thing that we built into the contract is, is to as much as possible hire bilingual, uh, EMTs and paramedics. Um, and the other thing to keep in mind too, is that the, the, the working conditions of these employees will be vastly improved because they'll no longer have to, um, spend, um, any of their downtime running non-emergency transfers as they currently do. Uh, they'll be dedicated, uh, solely to 911 responses.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And, and if, if you'd like, I can address some of the comments, uh, made by the speakers or I can, uh, wait till, um?
What, what, yeah, let's see, we have, uh, the council, we have Mayor Protam, uh, has a question, no, so Councilman Basua.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, um, you know, I hear a lot of discussion about response times and a response time in my mind is how fast someone gets on scene. Uh, and that's all good, but it goes more than beyond response time. It's, it's what do we do after we're on scene? What do we do to get the patient to the best treatment as quick as possible? And I think that's where we're lacking local control. That decision is made through the county. And while I've heard from some of the ambulance people that, well, we have the ability to go to St. John's to stabilize the, the patient before we, we take them somewhere else. I haven't been seeing that happen. And that's what concerns me about this is that we don't have local control over our assets. We're at the, um, I, I don't want to say whim, but we're under the control of a, of a board that we don't have a seat on, we don't have a say in. And I'm not sure that that is the best decision-making for the benefit of our residents. And when you look at the map, uh, of the EMS med 400 and med 600 unit responses, you'll see that the majority, the, the largest amount of responses is in central South Oxnard that has the highest, um, number of, of calls. And again, I'm, I'm sticking to my belief that if it's a trauma, they're going to go to VCMC. So maybe we get on scene within five minutes, that's great. But then we're looking at a protracted run into a medical facility when there's other capable medical facilities around that might be a benefit to us. I don't think we have the opportunity to make any difference in that, uh, system, the way the system is currently working. This is about local control for local residents to make sure we're doing the best for our community as possible. And, you know, I appreciate all the work that everybody's done, the EMS service and all that, but I think there's a real opportunity here to improve the level of service for our community. And I, you know, I just, I hate to speak negatively about anyone or any group, but I just don't think that Oxnard is getting the, the fair shake that we need to get for the benefit of our, our residents and our community. So I will support this.
Good. Thank you, Mayor Protam, uh, Councilman Basua, followed by city, our city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I, I just want to make a few comments in regards to this. Uh, thank you to our chief for bringing this item to us. It was, um, heard in the committee level and I'm just going to read again, just kind of say basically my same comments that I had at that time. Um, and Mayor, you mentioned it, we had 1,200 occasions where an ambulance did not respond to our city. And that to me is totally unacceptable. It is unacceptable that we cannot provide our residents with medical care. And I, I hear the speakers and I, and I hear them talk about money, money, money. I'll tell you what, no amount of money is worth losing a life. And I'm going to say that again, no amount of money is worth losing a life. So I'm going to end my comments there, Mayor. Thank you to my colleagues for, um, supporting this and, um, I'm looking forward to seeing our fire department get to work. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager.
Yes, uh, just a few quick comments from me. Um, uh, first of all, I, I want to say that we are absolutely asking the council to make a, a, a very, very significant decision tonight. And it pains me that because of Measure M, we can't have the full, um, the full arc of a discussion and decision-making process here. Uh, but I do hope, uh, anyone who's been interested has seen the videos, uh, that the chief taped, uh, prior to the committee and this council meeting. I want to be clear, what we're doing here, what we're asking you for here is your, um, confidence in staff because this is a risk for, for all of us because this is something we have not done before, um, in this city, uh, in the last several generations, right? We are looking to take on something that we haven't done for a very long time. Now, we are clearly confident that we can manage this and that local control is the best path forward here. And we're doing this now because this is the window of opportunity to withdraw from the JPA and assert our local control. As many of the council members and the chief have stated, we are focused here on the response time. And I, I just want to say it for the record because it's been said, uh, a few times before, we will not be putting sworn firefighters into the ambulances, period. So Mr. Portello's conspiracy theory that this is all about us trying to create an empire for the fire department is simply not true. What we're looking to do here again is a focus on local control to improve the response time, period. We will do the best that we can. Hopefully the courts will, will come out on our side on this. But this is, this is really that simple. That's what we're looking to do here. Thank you.
Councilmember Parello?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for all the comments, even the public speakers. Um, the highest calling for an elected official is health, safety and welfare. Health, safety and welfare. This is an item about health, safety and welfare for the residents of this city, city of Oxnard. The information that we've received, I have no reason to doubt it. There's been a tremendous amount of vetting. There are areas of the city that have not received the highest service possible. There have been questions that possibly we didn't wait or we waited too long, beg your pardon, we waited too long to address this. There is a point that needs to be clarified and I'm going to ask the fire chief to address this, if I'm right or I'm wrong. There was a window of opportunity every 10 years to extract yourself from an agreement and we had to wait. This has been an issue that has been aware of our council and members of the public safety for a long time, but you're trapped. You're trapped in an agreement. I support this. Health, safety and welfare. Having had to make the call, as Councilman Turan has mentioned, time drags. I do not know that the 1,200 calls for service, there were no responses. There were delayed responses, is my understanding. I could be wrong. But chief, please address how the process worked and when we could take an action and when it could be brought for this council to take an action. There were timelines and contracts. Please get a little detailed into that because there's a tremendous amount of the public that doesn't believe that we're doing something for the best interest of the residents. There's an unfortunate, a tremendous amount of people because of things that have happened in the city in the past, they think it's going to be building a kingdom for the fire department. It's a way to snooker the public and measuring money's going to pay for things to build Taj Mahals for everything else. And we are not being wise with our decision-making or the use of the public's trust in us. Can you please address some of those things? Thank you, chief. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Councilman Parello, I, I really appreciate the, uh, the questions. And so I want to reiterate what, uh, what the city manager just said, there will not be firefighters in ambulances ever. It is not the highest, best use of firefighters. And I think, um, uh, Ms. Brown, um, uh, spoke to it best. Um, we, we can use firefighters to fight fires and have, uh, paramedics and EMTs on ambulances to make sure that there's adequate numbers of, uh, ambulances, uh, to respond to medical calls. It's interesting, as we're speaking right now, there is currently only two ambulances available in the city. Uh, there's two ambulances covering other jurisdictions and a, and a third ambulance that should be in our jurisdiction that's currently on a non-emergency transfer. And this once again speaks to our local control issues that we have because I have no control over that and, and the decisions that are made on where those ambulances go. Um, but, uh, specifically, uh, Councilman Parello, to your question, uh, you are correct that, um, uh, we, we have allowed the county to administer our ambulance service, um, since the seventies and, and those, those contracts, they get renewed every 10 years. And so these contracts were last renewed in 2010. Um, that was around the same time that AMR bought Gold Coast Ambulance. Um, and, and so it was, it wasn't until probably 2015 that we really started to notice a change or a drop in, in, in the response times or an increase in the rates. Um, and so from 2017 onwards, we've been trying to rectify this problem with support of this council. We, we added a paramedic ALS program, uh, to assist. Um, ultimately that was only a Band-Aid and really didn't fix, fix the systemic problems. So, um, and, and the way that that joint powers agreement that has governed ambulance transport in the county since the seventies, the way that joint powers agreement is written is that we had to give 180 days' notice or six months' notice prior to the end of the current contract. Now that, that time comes up, uh, June 30th. And so we, we gave notice in December of last year in line with the joint powers agreement, um, so that we could, uh, affect, uh, a, a positive change. So while we have been trying to fix this issue since 2017, ultimately, um, the, the way to really fix this issue is, is a systemic change. And that's why we've, we've made this move and, and with, with the support of this council, we, we elected to leave the joint powers agreement. Hopefully that answers your question, Councilman Parello.
Yes, it does. Thank you very much, chief. Uh, thank you very much.
Thank, thank you.
And I'd like to, I'd like to say, chief, I'm sorry you've taken the shots from some of the members of the public that don't understand, but if they ever have to make that 911 call, I believe they will understand. Thank you for your service.
Thank you, council member, uh, council member Lopez.
Thank you, Mayor and, uh, Chief Hamilton for, for working through this. I know it's been, uh, quite some time since the first presentation that was, uh, in the Public Safety Committee, uh, about, uh, I think the initial report. Um, so it's the, I mean, it's been certainly a process to see this, uh, come forward and, um, really in the benefit of all our residents, um, especially those most vulnerable in our community. Um, so I, I do support this item and, uh, and, and what, there was one question that I'm not sure if I may have missed as you were talking about, um, elaborating on, uh, the, the, uh, space where our firefighters will continue to, to, our sworn firefighters will continue to work. Um, can you clarify if the ALS unit that, um, was, uh, uh, brought online, if that will continue in operation and, and, and how that will complement this contract?
Absolutely, yeah. The, the, the paramedic squad that was at, uh, Fire Station Eight, uh, we are looking to put that in service at, at the graduation of our next fire academy. Uh, so that will be going back in service. Um, and, and that, um, that unit being a specialty EMS resource is able to very quickly respond. Their average response time was just under four and a half minutes when it was in service and it, it generally only responds to those most critical calls, uh, particularly in the south end. Uh, so we look forward to adding that back, uh, to the service and that'll just complement, uh, the ambulance units that we'll be using from FALC ambulance.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, council members. Uh, council members, uh, I'm, uh, I'm going to read the recommendations for the city council and see if we have a motion. And, uh, the first item, it says approve the, and authorize the mayor to execute agreement A 8317 with FALC Mobile Health Corporation. FALC for three years with an option to renew for additional two years, not to exceed one In year one, 6,862,321. Second year, 6,514,727. The third year, 6,683,131. The fourth year, 600 and, uh, 6,826,999. And then the fifth year for ambulance transport services. Number two, uh, approve, approve and authorize the mayor to execute a purchase order in, in a conditional sales agreement in the amount of $492,381.11 for the purchase of 10 EKG monitors and 10 StairPro chairs using Stiker Flex Pay to be placed on ambulances operated by FALC in the city. And number three, authorize the city manager to approve, city manager to approve and execute amendments in agreements, A 8317, within the city manager's annual authorization as may be amended from time to time. So those are the three items that will be recommended. Do we have a motion on this?
So moved.
I'll second, Councilman McDonald moved, Phil seconded.
Okay, Mayor, uh, first by Mayor Protam, second by Mayor, uh, uh, Councilmember Parello. Go call him.
Mayor Protam McDonald?
Yes.
Councilmember Parello?
Yes.
Councilmember Lopez?
Yes.
Mayor Saragosa?
Yes.
Councilmember Madrigal?
Aye.
Councilmember Turan?
Yes.
Councilmember Basua?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you. Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Thank you for your work. Appreciate it. Okay, our last item here is the Public Works Department and the subject is railroad quiet zone establishment. Recommendation, the city council receive and file a report and the federal railroad administration railroad quiet zone process, potential application within the city of Oxnard. And this is, uh, was approved by the PW Transportation Committee three to zero. And there was a, a video that was, uh, shared by Measure M, a pre-recorded presentation. And Mr. Beck?
There's, remember, there's no presentation.
No presentation?
But I'll provide this.
Okay. Any questions, council members?
I can make a couple of comments.
Okay, um, Mayor Protam?
Make sure I'm off mute here. I, I just want to thank the committee for sending this forward. This is something that I asked for when I was on Public Works and Transportation before we reorganized all the committees and I, I speak from experience. I live eight blocks away from the Oxnard Transportation Center, uh, but my bedroom is on the second floor of my house and I can tell you at four in the morning, when they're moving things around the yard, that that train horn is crystal clear, um, very crystal clear. And so I can imagine what it would be like living in a house adjacent to Woolley and Nevada or Channel Islands in Albany or some other great crossing where the train goes through periodically. And because of FRA rules, Federal Railway Administration, they have to blow that obnoxious air horn, uh, otherwise they get in trouble. And I don't think I would be happy living next to the railroad tracks there. And there is an opportunity to mitigate that noise and disruption, especially at some odd godly hour of three or four in the morning, uh, with what they call hardened crossings, um, through this quiet zone opportunity. And I, I've done a lot of reading on this. I think it's very viable. I think it's something we owe our community, especially the, the community where the great crossings are, are in residential neighborhoods, but because of the, the cars coming out of the Navy Base, CBC, Porway-Nimie, the trains are the best way to move them and they have to follow the rules that they're given. So I, I'm just, I'm really appreciative of staff to take the time to really follow up on this and, and reinvigorate, reinvigorate this. I think there's a, a real opportunity to work with the Port of Wadibi who owns the entire Shoreline Railroad south of, of Fifth Street, um, to make this come to fruition. So thank you to all. So thank you to all that worked on and for bringing it forward. I will support this.
Okay, Councilmembers, before we continue, I have one speaker on this item, Ms. Pat Brown.
Ms. Pat Brown? Ms. Pat Brown, you may unmute by pressing star 6. Ms. Pat Brown?
Can you hear me now?
Yes, ma'am, we sure can.
Okay. I live just a block or so north of Woolley Road and the Five Points intersection. And the trains come and up to the intersection and they just honk and honk and honk and honk. And even though they've got the traffic signals for the cars to all stop, they still have to, you know, just bell her. And it's very irritating. That's during the day. And at night, a lot of times in the summer, if you want to sleep with your windows open in your bedroom around here in the center of Oxnard, you will hear the trains honking and honking and going as if they were going 70 or 80 miles an hour. Clippity-clopity, clippity-clopity. You hear it just, you know, it just goes on and on and on as the trains go through without stopping. And I've talked to people who live west of Oxnard Boulevard and north of Woolley Road. And they say that if they're on the phone and the trains come by and start to come by and they're honking, they have to just hang up their phones because there's no way to talk on the phone while those trains are just bellowing and bellowing here in down, along the Five Points intersection and going westbound. It's just terrible. The one thing that has made it better for me is in 2005, I decided I was having shingles blowing off my roof and I have a pointed high roof and ceilings. And the shingles blew off and so I got the roofer out here. And so they put in the new roof, took the whole thing out and they put in a huge amount of extra insulation in there to, in the roof, to try to cut some of the sound from the trains. I was shocked after it was all done. I can hear the trains if I go outside or if I open the window, but I don't hear the trains. I don't hear all that bellowing at the Five Points. If I'm outside, oh yes, I hear it. It's very aggravating. But I do not hear it if I'm inside with this thick insulation in the roof. That is an opportunity for other people who live in this area who don't like the noise of the train. They can have extra insulation in their roofs and it will help a great deal. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
If I may?
City Manager?
Yes, thank you, because I know this is an informational report basically, receive and file. But it's an issue that many of you have expressed interest in in the time that I've been here. And it is such a complex and large issue. I'd like to ask our traffic engineer, Mr. Timothy Bulkum, if he wouldn't mind, I know we can't give a presentation, it's pre-recorded, but provide what the key highlights are about how we would approach this. What are the timeframe? Because in my experience in Riverside doing these projects, it takes a long time. And also to highlight, who are the, who has the primary authority over this? Because it is certainly not us, the city. So if you would, if you'd allow a little time, I'd like to ask Mr. Bulkum just to provide those highlights.
And I think, Mr. City Manager, Councilmembers, I think it's important because it's such a huge report. You know, and I believe that currently, as was mentioned, there's really no funding for this item at this time and potentially when it need a consultant in the future. But yes, I believe that we need some good explanation. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am Tim Bulkum, the city traffic engineer, and I apologize so much. My computer literally just rebooted when this item started and I was just able to log back onto the Zoom meeting. So I heard the beginning of this and I just heard the city manager. So if you would indulge me with the question that was asked, I'll certainly respond to it as best I can.
Mr. City Manager?
Oh, Mr. Bulkum, if you can just, again, you can't make a presentation again, but if you just give the highlights of this process, the timeframe, and then most importantly for me, who has the ultimate jurisdiction over these issues?
Certainly. Well, as contained in both the staff report and the presentation, it goes into quite a bit of depth to really outline the full process that the Federal Railroad Administration requires in order to establish a quiet zone. In some respects, the control of those issues are somewhat open to the city's determination. As an example, as we would identify improvements that may be necessary at a particular crossing, it would be up to the city to pick the right mixture of improvements to meet the quiet zone requirements of actually implementing safety features that at least meet the current condition under horn sounds that the Federal Railroad Administration requires. In essence, their program is pretty simple. They require us to do improvements that at least make it as safe as what currently happens with the horns out there or at least meet the national average for crossings. They don't allow us to make it any worse. We have to make it at least as safe as it is. And so it's up to us to determine how to do that and then perform those improvements, certify that they've been done to the level that the conditions are at least equal to today or better, and then submit that to the Federal Railroad Administration with the certification that we believe those improvements meet those requirements of the quiet zone rule, the horn rule. There are many players in that process. We certainly involve ourselves with the California Public Utilities Commission that oversees railroad crossings, each one of the operators of the railroad and the property owners would be involved in that. So we would work mutually with those entities in order to hopefully arrive at a railroad zone, a quiet zone that meets the objectives of the community. So we do have some local control on certain issues, most primarily the improvements that we would move forward with. But ultimately, the Federal Railroad Administration makes the determination that we've met their requirements to go quiet in the areas that we would choose and then we would live within that parameter. And of course, after that, there's annual follow-ups that might be necessary to ensure that those safety efforts are maintained.
So my understanding right now that there's currently, this is just a receive and file, but you mentioned here in the financial impacts, there's really no available budget for it, for this item. And it's a monumental project, that's my understanding. And that potentially we're going to need some consulting assistance in the future. And I think you identified some of the items here that the next steps would be to identify locations within Oxnard for potential quiet zone implementation and potentially appropriate funding to hire a consultant to evaluate the crossing locations and prepare alternative assessments and developments, estimate and cost, and then provide considerations for a final determination to the city council.
Yes, those are the next steps that we've outlined in the report. The reason that we're recommending potentially the use of consultants is there are consultants that do this for an area of specialty. And we feel that if in fact we're able to hire in a group similar to the ones that are mentioned in the staff report as well as the presentation, they could actually expedite and actually save us money in the long term in trying to figure out what we could do at these particular locations as opposed to staff who doesn't have a lot of experience in quiet zone establishment. And so that would be something that we would come back to the council and seek future funding for that very issue.
For consideration.
That's correct.
Let me see, Councilmember Madrigal and followed by Councilmember Turan.
Thank you very much. I was actually very fascinated by the presentation and by comments made by Mayor Protam McDonald about his push to get this done in committee from a while back. And it's very interesting. I do have a couple of questions with some of the examples that were part of the presentation. I know that there was issues with some of the rail crossings. Some of them did not have the arms on Willie. And then I also saw some of the turrets that may come from putting those arms there. And then we had some ADA issues on Colonial Road. But the one I actually want to focus on and the one that caught my attention the most was actually the Gary Drive that back alley. I know it from high school. I went to Channel Islands High School. And that's a form of transportation for a lot of the students at Channel Islands High School, going through that opening in the neighborhood on Gary and then going to the adjacent neighborhood. So, you know, if something is done, would that whole general area be closed off? And if it is closed off, have people taken into account that that opening is still there and it's just going to create problems as in crime issues throughout the city if it's closed off? Because there is a gap in the housing area right there.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Councilmember Madrigal. The Gary Crossing was one of the examples that I wanted to put forward for the council, the community to review. I wanted to give a number of various issues that might have to be investigated. The Gary Crossing is a pedestrian-only crossing that basically links two substantial neighborhoods in between. And it's a good example of a location where we would have to satisfy the same quiet zone requirements that we would have to do for a general vehicle crossing out there. And so the proposal would not be to close that, but we would have to do improvements to that location that if we go in a quiet, if that crossing is located in a quiet zone, we would have to put gates or some kind of automatic system in there that would keep the pedestrians from being able to cross that facility when a train is coming through there. The important thing sort of to recognize is that even though we have quiet zones out there, there is the potential for the horns to still be sounded. And they sound for things like pedestrians trespassing across the rails or walking under the gates that you put in. But the Gary Crossing would stay in place, but we would have to probably upgrade that to make sure that pedestrians wouldn't be able to walk around a gate or walk through it when the trains are coming through and not sounding a horn.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'll just be fascinated with the end result is going to be. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Turan?
Thank you, Mayor. And I just want to thank Mr. Bulkum for the comprehensive presentation. I appreciated it as well. And believe it or not, I watched it twice. The first time and then I wanted to go back and see some specific items, but I ended up watching it all the way through. Now, Councilmember Madrigal actually brought up essentially what I wanted to touch on too. But just to make it clear for members of the public, the examples that are used in the presentation and potentially other locations that were not mentioned may need to be assessed and may need to be upgraded in order to meet the requirements that are going to be put forth if we decide in the future to go forward and submit to an application, become a quiet zone, right? Or establish quiet zones. And so the Gary Drive one was a really great example. But Woolley is another one, which I think many people interface with on a very regular basis and maybe don't put much thought into because of the low volume of train traffic that goes through there, unless you live there and know the schedule of when they come and go. But I just wanted to confirm that for the public that there will be sites, if we decide to move forward with this in the future, that will need to be assessed and will need to be upgraded by the city. Is that correct? And could you give me, or can you give the public some examples of what that might look like? What upgrades tend to be?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Councilmember Turan. Woolley Avenue, there's no doubt that the Woolley Avenue rail line as well as Woolley Avenue is highly complex on this particular issue. We, I do show at least one example of a passive crossing there at Fifth Street where it comes out to Woolley. And if in fact we attempted to establish a quiet zone in that segment, there would be some significant design and construction issues that we would have to accomplish in order to sort of bulletproof that location to keep vehicles and pedestrians from crossing there if a horn isn't sounded. If you start at the Five Points intersection that's so complex and has no gating system, I'm not exactly sure what avenues we would have there to create a quiet zone. But that's something that an expert consultant may be able to come in and afford us and give us some examples of what they might think. I do believe in looking at the crossings in town, that the likelihood of us pursuing additional closures is probably not a very high probability, even though that ensures, you know, the highest degree of safety out there. We all know that we're doing the rice and fifth grade separation. So that's a good example of how separating the vehicles from the rail line gets you 100% safety factors. But I don't see that being used in other locations very easily within the city to accomplish. So depending on the location, it could be something as simple as using the existing systems that meet the requirements. Or, as you've mentioned, Councilmember Turan, something along Woolley would probably require some substantial work in order to make it compliant with the quiet zone requirements.
Great. Thank you very much for that, again, Mr. Bulkum, and thank you, Mayor, for the time.
Yeah, thank you. And also I want to add a little bit too, to the Woolley Road and East Street. You know, that Woolley Road and East Street is really wide open. There's a school there. There's a church there. And also, again, you know, J Street is the same way and also Five Points. But Woolley Road and East Street, there's a Driffler School there. And I'm not sure if we should even wait for a consultant, I'm just hearing this out loud, that maybe we need some crossing arms there, you know, for those people to be a little bit safer for the kids that cross that during school. And of course, there's a lot of cars that are heading east on Woolley Road and they flip a U right into East Street and then head west on Woolley Road again. That's really, really unsafe crossing. So potentially, I'm not sure if we need a consultant to even wait for that. And I'm not sure what it would cost to even put some crossing guards there. But thank you again for the information. And no, it's a major, major, major presentation and lots to read. And I know that Turan said he read it. I read it three times, don't believe. But anyway, it's interesting. Thank you so much. And we have Porelo, Councilman Porelo?
Yes, Mr. Bulkum. Thank you very much for the presentation. I mean, you do very thorough work here. Tremendous amount of information. And it brings to mind the meeting that you had with Windsor North River Ridge Neighborhood Council and that turned at Patterson and Vineyard Avenue, which last night, another car took out a street light. But you're doing tremendous work and appreciate the work and from the compliments you're getting from the council. Impressive work. Thank you.
Okay, Councilmembers.
Mr. Mayor, can I add one more comment, please?
Mr. City Manager?
Yes, just to add to what Mr. Bulkum has stated. The good news about this is this is not a wheel that we need to invent. These quiet zones have been established throughout, certainly throughout California. And I know of specific ones here in Southern California. So we're not inventing anything new here. There's a lot of expertise out there. It's just that it takes a lot of time. It will take, depending on what we choose to tackle, it will take a lot of financial investment, but there may be some grant dollars available as well. And I also want to add that we did receive written comments from our partners at the port and they certainly stand ready to work with us on these issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Porelo? You got unmute.
I forgot to lower the hand. I apologize. Sorry.
Okay. Okay, so this is a receiving file and that's our last item for this evening. So we're going to adjourn. Thank you.
Not at all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.